I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Local, this ain't good.
Yeah.
This, this. This is a quarry.
Here.
This line ahead, this ferry here, this side one.
Here.
Higher. For public information, each project will follow its procedure. After we've explained the project, the agency comments or another comments or questions. Their public comment, we ask you to keep your comment to three minutes. And when you come up, please give us your name and your address. Okay, first project tonight is eleven tweet Boulevard Site Plan.
Hi, Eric. Jerel Vaccaro, VACC A R O. Krypton Engineering. J O R E L.
Please expand your other project.
Good evening. This is a, this is a proposed single-family residence, eleven tweet Boulevard. It is comprised of the structure itself, a septic system, a stormwater system, incorporated retaining wall for benefit of septic system. We've gone through preliminary, we've received our zoning variances, which included existing undersized lot quit. The accounted lot area, floor area ratio, front yard setback, and maximum building height. Most of these variances are part due to the steep slopes and the position of the dwelling being located down slope in Tweet Boulevard. Height variance, the setback, we basically pulled the footprint of the house as far forward as possible to, one, be able to actually access it. And two, to minimize the effect on the steep slopes to the rear of the property. Beyond the dwelling is the septic, which we kept limited as far forward as possible while still providing the required hundred foot to the incorporated well. We're not on, we're on our own well, we will be on our own well, our own septic. So all that is part of the site plan, we've received variances for those. For those items, then we've also received approval. We're back to the final, we've received several comments, reviewed all of those, and none of which have any objections.
Thank you. Yeah, no, let, welcome, thank you. Eleven tweet Boulevard, the PRC has no additional comments beyond the comments submitted by other agencies for the project. Also Building Plan, Selling Plan, Administration Enforcement, later dated March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, there are two comments. Environment Management and Engineering, later dated March seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, there are fifteen comments. Local Engineering, dated March twentieth, twenty twenty-three. The application has provided sufficient information to demonstrate that potential significant adverse impacts we respect the range of mitigating. We therefore recommend that the eleven tweet Boulevard Site Plan be approved for drainage subject to the published private comments, which are pink. Rockton County Department of Plan, March third, twenty twenty-three, there are sixteen comments. Rockton County Center for Environmental Health, March third, twenty twenty-three, there are three comments. Okay, this is the first one, it's the proposed septic system requires approval from this office. Engineer plans have been submitted to the office for review, they are now under review, are the streets part of that?
Um, I haven't, I spoke to Ms. Yello, yes, uh, the day before yesterday, Monday. She, she has no further comments at this time, which I, I will be very generous.
Okay. Rockton County Highway, August October twenty seventh, twenty twenty-three, they have two comments. Upper daddy, Orange and Rockland, female date is Thursday, February ninth, twenty twenty-three. Owen R does not have a service fee in his property. Rockton County Plan, March two fifteen, twenty twenty-three, comments attached. Rockton County Department of Health, March third, twenty-three, comments attached. We have a short E A F, it's not signed, you have to sign the, that E A F dated. And you have to correct comments thirteen A and sixteen as per the E A F map.
That may not be the most, I did submit a more recent one with the private, and if it wasn't as part of package, I'll resubmit it. I, I know.
But again, it's in, it's in your final, so.
Okay.
You've got, you have already done some breath, and first go around.
Right, okay, just that it wasn't signed and dated, want to have them like back.
I believe we did get them.
Okay. Act of Board Decision, for page number twenty-two dash sixteen, April seventh, twenty twenty-two, and Z B A. Dated October twenty eighth, twenty twenty-one, Z B A number twenty-one dash ninety-one. And Planning Board Decision, July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one. Number. Twenty-one dash sixteen. Okay, that's, I think that's all the comments we have. Mr. Andrews. Looking over the, the landscape footprint, and it shows a lot of pursuit of trees, are those, were you putting in a lot of those pursuits?
We're not installing trees, the proposed landscaping does not have any trees, there are many trees beyond the ones that are shown to be removed. We're planting screening for the driveway, and I believe I can turn to it, I believe arbor byde and boxwood are what we're proposing. Really only propose, if you, if you take it with C one-ten. We're, we're screening along the, the property line where the lights would face with arbor byde. And we're doing planting of boxwood along the driveway in front. There, there are no proposed trees because we have many trees, and the only ones we're removing are getting specifically the driveway, the footprint of the building, and the septic and associated retaining wall. But we're really only removing trees where we need to construct structure, only constructing that structure, and planting as we can, smaller plantings.
This tree removal protection. You are, you're listed here to be, to remain, and all these other ones are going to come out?
Correct, they are. They're, it's a wooded area, there are many trees to come out at the front. This is not a comprehensive list of everything on the site, this is only the front portion within the area of work, which is only a portion of the site.
There's a lot of trees.
Yes, it is, it is a wooded site, granted.
Do, other than the arbor byde, are they going to be green giant arbor byde?
Yes.
Other than the arbor byde that you're going to put in, are you planning on planting any more in the front, are you removing all these trees?
We aren't, we're pretty much, because of the front yard setback variance, we're pretty much pushed all the way up front with the structure in the driveway, there's not really room for a large tree. We're really just shrubs at the front, so we have very limited room. And, and we are keeping tree, two trees at the front. We just really don't have much room to plant anything of a substant, that, that type of substantial size.
Well, I'm not even thinking about the size, I mean, you don't grow.
Yeah, we, I, I can discuss with the owner and propose another small, you know, tree perhaps where the temporary stockpile is, we have some utilities going there, the water and the electric.
Will you put some, some more on the side? Side property line?
The side, if we could, it's very steep there, it'd be difficult getting anything established on a steep rocky slope. It's, this won't look bald, it's, it's going to have fairly dense, smaller, shorter plantings at the front. And there's, all of the trees at the rear, and the C one-ten doesn't give you a great perspective.
Yeah, so I'm looking at the rear and according to the.
There's a lot of trees at the rear, and it's, it's completely forested. I don't have the site survey showing all of them, but, but this is really the first hundred feet of several hundred more feet of lot area, which is also heavily forested. And it'll remain untouched, anything outside of this area of work that's shown. So, it is forested, we're removing it, planting what we can fit in the front, but there, there's still substantial amount of established trees in the rear and middle.
I don't have anything more right now.
Were you, were you, I heard of the well and the septic?
The, the septic, as I said, I have verbally, Liz doesn't have any more comments. It was actually quite a bit of, of maneuvering to get, what, what's actually happening is we're constructing a substantial retaining wall at the rear just to get enough of a level width across the site back there to get in an L gen system, which we can get in the required length with this wall. We've also worked with, you know, the different department, the health department to locate the well, got the, the actual print will come from the well driller, but we've got that location. I believe I even submitted the email correspondence to the coordinator.
You have closed one, you pushed a little well and put another, that's.
No, 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 there's only one proposed well, it's just that the distance to the septic needs to be a hundred feet at minimum. And every foot we move to the rear, this property gets steeper and steeper. So we pushed this well as far forward as permitted, and again, it was back and forth to get that well located properly, we coordinated that, which led to then laying out the system location, which we've now laid out with an associated retaining wall. After much coordination, where we should be tentatively good to go, she has no further comments, they just need to get the drawings. I actually submitted them a while ago. Along with a couple others that I submitted, so they're back.
Uh, it looks like a good plan for a single-family home with limited effect on the neighbors' environment. Uh, you just have a bunch of comments you gotta read.
Yes.
You know, she still has some work to do.
There's some, the drainage system was really last to be manipulated here, right? The septic, again, septic and the well and the retaining wall part of this were, were the difficult parts to coordinate. The drainage falls out of this pretty easily, and it's, it's, it's there, the design-wise, there's some.
Yeah, but you'll, you'll handle that with, with Peter.
Those are all in comments, and we have no problem with that.
Oh, the one comment I'm concerned about is, Ms. Slade's number one. See that, you met many of the variants? See that memo coming?
Uh, which, which letter you?
Uh, the driveway.
Driveway.
Advocate must install a driveway to meet the required town code or return to the Z B A for approval.
Um, not sure, I saw that comment, what was the, did I, I'm sorry.
The letters was issued on the seventeenth.
Return it to Z B A is a.
Okay, was it, was it the surface?
In the Act of Board Approval, it stated that they were giving you the option of a paper driveway or an asphalt driveway. They actually, actually don't have permission to do that.
Okay, I didn't, sorry, I was surprised. Must have misunderstood what was going on here, so.
It's just the way the decision was.
It's required to be a paper driveway, is that?
No, it's required to be M A C A N A M by code.
I, I don't believe we're going to have any issue with that, we're, we're fine with that, we'll, we'll put that as.
If the applicant wants to have a paper driveway, then you'd have to go to the Z B A to get permission for that, because our code doesn't permit it.
Okay, understood.
Then we talk to get five.
M A C A N A M.
All right, good answer. Okay, so you meant that, that was really the one that kind of stuck out, and it was a, it's a little surprising right there. But that's it, my comments. Mr. Andrews.
Um, can you just explain a little bit, it's just such a steep hill in the, in the back, about how you're controlling the drainage, that your drainage just impacting the neighbor below?
Yes, so we're, what we're doing and what's actually going on here is, and we have, we have borings in advance of the structural engineering design in the wall, which all plays in here. There's bedrock underlying this entire site, only a couple feet deep. So really what's going on, and I've, I've been, I've been very conservative with the stormwater assumptions, as in its soil that is, you know, currently absorbing the water, which it isn't. But we're, we're making the assumption that it is forested area, that it's absorbing some skin amount, we're doing the proposed analysis, taking that volume. And what we're doing is we're removing even some rock, we're ensuring that as installed, we'll have the required depth, and we'll be using engineered fill. Similar, exactly the same actually, as the engineered fill, we've already specified for the, the septic, it's going to work the same as the septic system in effect. And we're providing retention and infiltration for the ten-year storminence entirety of the entire new impervious surface, both driveway and roof and patio. Because of the significant grades, it is difficult to get, it's not possible to get it all to one system while still maintaining the very shallow depth we have to do inside to maintain the soil depth. So we're. Retaining and infiltrating the majority of the driveway and, and dwelling in, in a front, fairly large front cul-de-sac system, which we really, really can, can get in the easiest, which I'll pair at the end. There's a portion of driveway that we cannot get by gravity to that upper system, so there are two more cul-de-sac units going in the side portion of the driveway as you, as you access the garage. There is a, a catch basin that will, will have a plumped overflow over that storm, which again is below existing assumed runoff. The proposed runoff volume is below existing. It will overflow down into a, a lower system, which we actually require just to pick up that lower patio, which can not get to either of the front infiltration systems, that lower patio. And the overflow, although, there's a comment about this, I'll work it out, will overflow, uh, will, will be conveyed into a, just a drywall that gets dropped in prior to the wall construction, that will have an overflow either incorporated or separate, that will, that will overflow into a level spreader in excess of any, any volume from, in excess of the ten-year stormline. The level spreader will actually spread it out more than what's happening now, which it is kind of channelizing along this side of the property. And again, this is all assuming that this isn't impervious, and we're picking up the difference in volume to impervious, which is a, what's going on to. Very conservative system, hopefully that explains enough.
Mr. Barrett?
Uh, so very challenging site with these slopes, right? We go from, from five-twenty here all the way down to four-eighty, four-sixty is the first retaining wall?
Just at the first retaining wall, yes, it goes down to.
What's like your order of construction here, like, what, how are you going to build this?
Drywall and retaining wall.
No, I mean, you're going to build this lower retaining wall first, and then come, come up, or what's the?
We're backing our way out. And most, all of the critical components, there's actually a separate set for this wall in and of itself, structurally separate from the dwelling, it's getting pinned to rocks, so we're going to have to come down lower. The contractor will be responsible for providing temporary protection here. I've been discussing with them about pinning that protection back prior to flattening out the, the bedrock portion for the footing. It's, it's going to be a pinned dowel footing into the bedrock. This will get constructed first, that'll allow us to backfill with that engineered fill and install the L gen septic system, and then back our way out. The dwelling, footings of the dwelling will be constructed similarly, flattening out a portion of rock and pinning into the, that bedrock. But overall, we're going to construct lower first and back our way out.
Uh, how did the rock site?
I don't recall. There, there's a separate structural set, which I have, I don't think I've that printed out.
I think, I think. How does the town enforce this thing, or?
It's expected, and I'll have to be certified. Yep. The whole project will be certified upon completion as built drawings and certification from the engineer of record saying it was done.
Was that another comment I read about no perk testing done, is that?
Right, so the, so I, I didn't do the structural here, it's Martos' office did the structural, I work closely with, but, um, what had happened was he requested borings along both the wall and, and the footprint of the building. Those borings indicated bedrock underlying the site basically eighteen inches to two feet deep, over the, every boring they did, plus a couple preliminary test pits. At that point, just like the septic system, he decided we're going to bring in engineered fill and remove rock, ensure that three-foot separation with engineered fill. So there's nothing to do with perk testing yet. Certainly if, as a condition, which I have to discuss with Bruce Peters, if he's still wanting perk test in that engineered fill once it's in place to verify. That's what I intend on proposing to him to address his comment, that's preliminarily what I'm, what I'm looking to do at that time, once it's installed. Which if, once we get it with, along with the civil analysis, it should ensure that perk rate, we can test it just the same.
That sounds good to me. Okay, plenty of comments.
Sorry.
Um, this seems like a pretty long building process, what is the timeline expected for something this big? And I'm just wondering for impact on people below and around the noise.
Sure, so yes, we're, rock, we're, the, the very beginning part and the subsequent building foundation part will be the loudest. There's going to be rock hammering to flatten out the, the pieces of rock. We'll intend on complying with, you know, whatever work hours we need to work within. Eight to five weekdays only, things, things of that nature, the, the neighbor to the, the right, I've actually spoken to, and the owner has a good relationship with. He's, seems to be, you know, happy to, to see something going in here nicely, and certainly willing to work with whatever schedule needs to happen there within typical work hours. Yes, there will be, there will be rock removal, which will be loud, and we're not going to be blasting or anything like that, obviously, it's going to be equipment-mounted hammers. It's going to be mounted on an excavator, and they're going to have to hammer it out. He's gotten a, a feel for the noise because of the borings, similar, they had to do the boring, it was a similar level that he's going to get. He's aware of that. The, the rock installation for the wall itself, probably looking at it a couple weeks, it's, it's difficult, they're going to have to drill in, like I said, the protection first, which will all be handheld equipment, subsequently going all along the entire width of the property with an excavator, hammering it out probably two weeks. As a guess, it's my guess. The, the foundation portion of the house, possibly three. Something of that nature, I'd say in the order of a couple weeks. The rest of the construction, hopefully, once they get out of the ground, it's very, very typical. Everything else, once we get out of the ground in these difficult areas to work with, they have a pretty, pretty flat work, work area at the, at the upper portion to work off of, and it should be typical.
That was one question, thank you.
You answered one of my questions, and we don't blast them, right? Um, do you still fence?
Yes.
Make sure it's backed up with hay bale?
Yes, the, there should be, so the detail, hay bale reinforcement. I have the structurals, or you get, you guys have the drawings. One foot, sorry. The, yes, the, the hay bales should be on C four-hundred. C four-hundred with the silt fence, it does have hay bale reinforcement.
I'd like to march for only one report. If you're upset in this one, in full favor. Does anybody from the public like to speak on this project? Does anybody from the public like to speak on this project? Move the public portion to close. Let me say.
Hi, I'm Vanessa Lapins from six fifty-nine Western Highway. I just wanted to mention that the new, the new comprehensive plan mentions native plantings about nine times. And so if we can encourage people who come before us to plant things like red cedar, wood hazel, spice bush, shed bush, there's lots of great native plantings that people can put in that are beautiful. So I would just like the planning board to consider that when they look at things like boxwood, which is not native, and, you know, other, other options, thank you.
Comprehensive plan has yet to be approved, so.
But it's one minute away.
It's mentioned.
One minute away.
Maybe not. All right, thank you, anybody else like to make a comment? Anybody else to help upon make a comment? Gary Nether motion closed, hopefully. If there is, Andrews, that second, this one in, in full favor?
Aye.
Yeah, if you can put some native plants in.
Yeah, I actually, I kind of just consult with, not an expert on the plantings. If we have a list, if I could actually request that list, or drive, I have no problem switching out.
No, it's, it's up to you. I, I'd just suggest, and I'm not familiar with most of the native plantings. This is, and mentioned boxwood is not native, but boxwood is a good year resistant plant.
That's why we chose.
So.
And I also like to know.
I'll get some.
Because I'm needing to look at. Also, you had Act of Board, you could Act of Board, and you had approval, and then we start changing the plans, and the landscape we planned, we got to start over.
That's a good point.
Yeah, they're not changing anything unless you consult with me first, because I might have to kick you back to the boards then.
All right.
It is, it is in the Department of County for Rock and County recommending using native plants.
Right, but it's only recommendation, he's already received approval from another board for the plantings. So unless there's a specific requirement, the planning board wants to have the applicant conform to, just having a blanket of up native plants, that, that is violation of the Act of Board.
Other than that, I don't care. We're, we're okay with anything as long as it's not getting eaten.
That's too much.
All those that I listed in the minutes are do resistant?
Anybody on board have any further comments? Anybody on board? Okay. Do I have a motion for a final? Mr. Statistician, do I, uh, can we read the comments? With conditions, all right? Also Building, Zoning, Planning, Administration Enforcement, March fourteenth, there are two comments. Environment Management and Engineering, later dated March seventeen, twenty. Department Environmental Management and Engineering, Leonard Data, March seventeen, twenty twenty-three, here are fifteen comments. Broker Engineering, Leonard Data, March twenty, twenty twenty-three, there are eight comments. Rockland County Department of Planning, Leonard Data, March third, twenty-three, there are sixteen comments. Senator Environmental Health, Rockland County, March third, twenty twenty-three, there are three comments. Rockland County Highway Department, Leonard Data, February twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three, they have two comments. And the comments from Alfred Gotti, uh, contact them. Okay, and I want to add two more things. Uh, one condition will be the driveway must be machined. If you, if you desire to use pavements, you must return to ZDA for variance. You have that pavement? Okay. And you have the silt fence? Anybody else, anything else?
Um, do we have to make a note about no last year?
Uh, do I have a motion being from Speaker? Your from Speaker, Mr. Berry, so Andrew second, all in favor? Do I have a second on the motion for final?
Second for final.
Andrew. You may be.
I can do the first.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Okay. Next item on the agenda is SMK Green Subdivision Esco leaving. Sign in and, uh.
Esco.
Oh, your last name, comment?
Explain why you did.
To give my money back.
Okay. All right.
Wait a minute, I think I might have more comments.
Okay, we read the comments. Office of Building, Zoning, Planning, Administration Enforcement, March fourteen, twenty twenty-three, one comment. Office of Building, Zoning, Planning and Engineering Enforcement has no comments. Department Environmental Management Engineering, out of Orange Town, Leonard Data, February third, twenty twenty-three. Please be advised that all requirements of our respective departments have been, believe is satisfied. We therefore recommend the release of the first font for the above purpose project. And second letter to Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, Q thirty, twenty twenty-one. This is public approval, Esco document, address and K green subdivision tracking. Right? The re- from Speaker on this or this, uh?
No, you don't have to.
Okay, do I have a motion to, uh, recommend, do we recommend this to the downward? Okay, motion recommend this to the downward, this is a corory, second, all in favor? Aye, aye. Thank you. Thank you. Next item on the agenda. Dish Wireless Facility Co. located in existing base station rooftop plan. Please sign in, state your name, and address for that to be.
Yeah, what's your name, sir?
David Kenny.
Right, thank you.
Good evening, my name is David Kenny, I'm attorney of Snyder and Snyder. Here tonight to represent the applicant Dish Wireless LLC. Connection with this application for an eligible facilities request to co-locate its equipment at the existing rooftop site located at one dash four Salisbury Point. I believe this is the building number three Salisbury Point. There are two buildings in this complex that aren't support wireless telecommunications equipment. Uh, the one that Dish is proposing to locate on currently supports equipment for AT&amp;T and Verizon Wireless. Um, the application is so that Dish, as some of you may know, there was a merger a few years ago between T-Mobile and Sprint. Um, the Department of Justice required that T-Mobile and Sprint divest some of their spectrum and some of their assets to Dish Wireless. So that Dish Wireless could maintain the fourth carrier position in the country. They wanted to make sure as far as, you know, protecting against monopoly, that there was always four carriers. So with the merger of two of the four carriers, Dish was created as this fourth carrier. So they're now going around the country and doing a national rollout, um, trying to build out its network so it can be this fourth national carrier. Um, that's one of their things, or one of their points in trying to make sure where they locate their equipment. Um, they're trying to take advantage of opportunities that are already supporting similar wireless infrastructure. Um, so here they've located their equipment on the rooftop of the existing building that again supports equipment for AT&amp;T and Verizon Wireless. Um, so their application right now is for three antennas as well as related equipment on the rooftop. Um, the equipment is being located, um, we have the drawings. The equipment is being located, um, at the edge of the roof, at the parapets. Um, this is, that's shown on two to C three. This is a, a plan on the overall rooftop. Um, so we received comments regarding, um, whether or not the town's considering this an eligible facilities request. Um, Dish Wireless first filed an application with the building department to first try to install this equipment. Um, that application was referred to this board. Um, we did receive some comment memos that I believe we'll be discussing tonight. Um, one of the requirements for an eligible facilities request is that they're allowed to locate at these existing installations. As long as they don't create what is defined as a substantial change. And that is an objective criteria of six, uh, standards. Basically first is they can't increase the height of the existing structure by more than ten feet. Here, because we're being located lower than the bulkheads and lower than the tallest point on the building, we're not exceeding this ten foot limitation. There's also a requirement that they not protrude further out from the side of the building more than six feet. By being located set back from the parapet, we're meeting that requirement, they're not extending more than six feet. Uh, there's also a requirement for the number of equipment cabinets that are installed. Can't do more than four any one installation. Here, we only have one equipment cabinet, so we're meeting those requirements. Um, and then the final two, or, uh, there's also a requirement, there's no deployment more than thirty feet outside of the site. This being always located on the rooftop, there's no question that we're not deploying outside of the site. Um, but the two that have been brought up are, there's a requirement that we don't defeat any existing concealment elements. And also that there's no defeating of any existing conditions of approval. Um, so there was some comments when we first, uh, were discussing this application with the town. Um, this was referred to whose town communications, um, they, and they issued a report or issued a comment memo saying that it was defeating the existing concealment elements because these antennas would be above the parapet. Um, I'm not sure if any of you guys are familiar with the site, but you're, there are visible antennas above the parapet. Um, they're shown here on the drawings, it's in the center. It's right here, there's Verizon antennas that they're extending on the bulkhead. And there's also Verizon antennas here that they have on their own equipment cabinets that also extend above the bulkhead. It's shown on Z three, but what may be a better, uh, kind of representation is we included photo simulations with the report. So we showed, um, photos of the existing structure. And then we also showed photo simulations of where the antennas are proposed. So we have some of, uh, the existing photos up here in the top left-hand corner. And then here in the main photo is included with the photo simulations. These antennas that stick above are the proposed Dish Wireless antennas. And as you can see here in this viewpoint, um, the existing antennas for Verizon are already visible above the parapet, above the rooftop. So we received comments that extending above the parapet defeats the concealment element. Um, so it's not a concealment element for a couple of reasons. First, because you can see the existing antennas for the other carriers, practically it's not a concealment element. Two, also it's as a matter of law, a concealment element has to be, if you have any kind of monopoles here, they're sometimes designed as trees, they call it monopines. Or sometimes to define, um, or AT&amp;T, for example, on the structure, they have a screen wall that shields their antennas. So a concealment element has to be something that makes the antennas look something other than an antenna structure. So that's limited to monopine or, you know, using stealth screen walls or anything like that. What we had a comment on, which I guess was related to change from a defeating of a concealment element was that there may be an underlying condition of approval to set back the equipment from the roof edge. However, that criteria is actually further limited by federal law. So while you have to comply with the conditions of approval, there can't be a condition of approval that would otherwise eliminate eligible facilities request. So you can't have a condition of approval that says, um, you need to be located on a certain part of the rooftop because the entire rooftop is the existing base station. And we're allowed to, as long as we're meeting other substantial change requirements, locate our equipment on the rooftop. Speaking with Dish, there is also practical reasons for their location. Um, so by locating it in the center of the rooftop, there was RF interference issues with the existing antennas. They're also located at the center of the rooftop. There was also RF emissions, uh, of RF exposure reasons for why they couldn't flush mount the antennas, um, on the building. The areas where they would have been flush mounted would have been right above the windows for some of the residents below. And so from their standpoint, they felt that it was a better design and a safer design to have it as proposed now, the antennas sticking above the parapet. Um, and as a matter of point, you know, from looking at existing photos from the site, again, this is from the front of the building. You can see the other antennas that are standing on their equipment cabinets. There is existing antennas that are already visible from surrounding property. Um, so from a practical standpoint, we didn't see this as a real existing concealment element or a real existing condition of approval because the antennas that are there today are still visible from surrounding properties. Um, I drove the site today and actually took some additional photos. Um, so I have these tonight to pass out to the board. Um, these are photos, again, so this isn't the only building on the property that has, um, existing telecommunications equipment. As I stated before, there is another building just directly behind this that has existing equipment for T-Mobile. So if you go from a further, uh, from outside of the property and you take, uh, views from the surrounding streets, almost all of the views of this building that we're proposed to be locating on already include both, uh, views of existing antennas that stick above the platform. Whether it be on this building we're proposing now or the building directly behind us that includes antennas for T-Mobile and Sprint. Um, so for our submission, uh, we respectfully submit that this is an application that's required to be approved under federal law as an eligible facilities request. Uh, so we respectfully request that the board approve it as such, but I'm here tonight to answer any questions you may have.
Office of Building, Zoning, Planning, Administration Enforcement, March twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three, I have three comments. Uh, attached to that is the Village of South High as zoning board appeals decision regarding Verizon Wireless, January sixth, twenty oh nine.
If I may speak first?
No, please, I'm reading through these things after we, and then there'll be some questions. Not gonna answer aside from these, actually, obviously. We have a planning board, uh, decision from November nineteenth, two thousand eight, regarding the buildings. And we, yeah. But I can just read a couple of the things from here. So we got it all. And zoning board, January sixth, twenty oh nine, the antennas are located in the edges of the roof, be painted to match the building. The equipment is located on the rooftop, but painted to match the building, and that's from the Verizon representative. Is that hearing? We have, and the planning board decision, yeah, from Verizon's, uh, thing, cabinets have been moved plus the central, the roofs are less visible in surrounding areas. The antennas, uh, will be painted to match the building. Okay? And, uh. And then again, uh, the planning board, uh, November nineteenth, two thousand eight, number one modification that's discussed with the question on either the outdoor sector antennas. The existing building parapet painted to match the brick color and that the baby sector antennas need back and mounted on either the equipment cabinet or the service platform. Subject to the app confirming that they need, that this meets the coverage criteria and the FCC RFA two thousand. Okay, I have a letter, uh, from Mr. Ronald Decker.
Gray.
Gray, okay, radio frequency consulting engineer, December twenty-sixth, two thousand eight. Uh, Department of Environmental Management Engineering, dated March seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, one comment. Alfred Gotti, uh, email, uh, Wednesday, March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, uh, one comment, close Dish Network. Uh, wireless work at one dash four Salisbury Point, maybe in conflict with existing gas facilities, please contact them. I have another email from Rob, uh, Ronald Gray, uh, Sunday, March nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. Taxual is reported from the same person, radio frequency consulting engineer, March nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. Rockland County Highway Department, March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, no comments at this time. Rockland County Highway Department, uh, three fourteen twenty-three, consents to the town of Orange Town Plating Board Service League Agency. Rockland County Planning Department, March thirteen twenty-three, consents to the town of Orange Town Plating Board Service League Agency. Three twenty-one twenty-three, Rockland County Department of Health, they consent to the town of Orange Town Plating Board Service League Agency. Rockland County Health, March twenty-first, twenty-three, no comments at this time. Three fourteen, twenty twenty-three, Village of Grand New Orleans Hudson, consents that the town of Orange Town Plating Board Service League Agency. Double letter from Schneider and Schneider LLP, dated March third, twenty twenty-three. We show the environmental assessment form, dated one eighteen twenty-three. A photo simulation report from, uh, dated January early twenty-three from Arrow Smith Engineering. Uh, a report on pool, digital, M K, dated January thirtieth, twenty-three. Dish Wireless, our justification report dated November twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, Abdul Engineering, report dated twenty, January twenty-sixth to twenty-three regarding the, uh, buying of the codes. That's all I have, is that everything? Okay, Mr. Andrews, do you have any questions?
Lots. Uh, in your, your letter, I believe dated March third, twenty twenty-three, to, uh, Tom Warren, Warren goes up here. Mr. Bellows in his place. On page three, the, uh, paragraph that we do, uh, we disagree with, uh, localities who argue. Could you tell me, uh, in particular, page three of the list? Yeah, center of, um, paragraph, this one paragraph, I can't hear you. Where it starts, we disagree. Could you tell me who our rules specifically address? Who rules our rules?
I'm sure. What rules does?
So this comes from twenty, uh, twenty twenty report and order from the FCC. So it's the FCC's rules.
Okay.
So again, eligible facilities requests come with the federal law. In twenty twelve, the federal government, Congress issued the middle class tax relief act. Um, but since then, the FCC is in charge of, uh, enacting opinions and also implementing regulations that help clarify what an eligible facilities request is. So they're referring to their rules regarding eligible facilities request.
Ms. Slaven's, um, letter dated, uh, March twenty, twenty twenty-three. Uh, and I have a question about this. You're proposing that the, uh, equipment platform be put on the edge of the building? You're proposing that the equipment platform be put on the edge of the building?
So is?
Why, let me just, why, why wouldn't you put it in the center of the building where it's more concealed and not showing, you know? I go around Westchester County and the antennas on these buildings are ludicrous. It doesn't do anything to enhance the beauty of some of the buildings. As a matter of fact, it makes them look puzzling. And with the picture, the photograph that you have here, you're proposing that you're going to put your satellite dishes and everything hanging off the side of it, which I know you want to paint them or whatever, but I'd rather see them a little bit more stealth, you know, cabinet around them. Somewhere that's going to hide it. I mean, I wish I had time to take pictures of some of these buildings and it's really ugly, to tell you the truth. So an equipment, your equipment cabinet or whatever it is, hanging off the side of this building, to me is not really, it's an isolation.
If I can respond, so the equipment cabinets are hanging off the edge of the building. They're located on the corner of this rooftop here. So it's still on the rooftop.
Right, but it's pretty close to the edge.
Right. If you can just let me explain. So if you, the best view I think of this, if you look at the view two from the photo simulation, the equipment cabinet just barely sticks above the parapet here. So this is the, the issue with the equipment cabinet, it's literally barely above the equipment, uh, above the parapet. And any view of this equipment cabinet, you're also going to have the existing view of this antennas that are sticking up here. But the main reason why they've located it here was a structural reason. So they didn't have the ability, they wanted to make sure that they weren't going to impact the structural capacity of a rooftop. So they had a structural engineer prepare a report and they were able to confirm that they were able to locate it here in this corner without affecting or impacting the structural capacity of the rooftop.
So you do a construct, do the, you, uh, do the engineer for the center of the building to see if it would hold the cabinet?
So again.
Did you do a study on that?
I don't believe so. So I can ask him further detail about exactly what went on for the planning there. But what they did was is that they basically did a study that said there may be some impacts to the structural capacity of the roof that locates in the center. What they did then was that they confirmed that they were able to locate here at this corner without having any such impact. And so the building owner and?
Impact where?
To the rooftop.
To the rooftop.
The structural capacity won't affect.
But he, but yet he didn't do a, uh, an evaluation of the center of the building.
Not to the level that you're asking.
Where it would look, where it would look much better in the center of the building than hanging up, not hanging, but to the one side of the building.
Well, I, I argue, I would argue that point because again, if you look at the photo simulations, you.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, it's barely sticking up, but again, even if this wasn't here, if I put my finger there, you still have the antennas that are right next to it that are sticking up.
Right, so what I'm saying is, why make it any complicated?
So again, it, the reason why they located there is through their review of structural capacity of the rooftop, which may not have been to the level that you're asking about, was that it was able to be located in this corner and it was able to be done so without affecting the structural capacity of the rooftop. Locating in the center would require probing, additional efforts, and discussions with the landlord, it was preferred to have it located in this area. And again, as a matter of federal law, because it's an eligible facilities request, this is within their federal rights to put it in this location. They are demonstrating through the photo simulations that this isn't an area of the building where there's no visible equipment. So if you can see this equipment on, on the lower part of the roof, you're also going to see the existing Verizon antennas. So from their standpoint.
Where are we seeing that now?
Correct, and so.
I'm just saying, why make it worse?
We're not talking about the antennas, we're talking about the, the equipment.
Sure.
Verizon has set this gift inside. As the president placed the party approval back in 2008 and nine of the Verizon's equipment being placed in the center of the building.
Again, I can ask for further explanation from my engineers, but the explanation I was told was that it was a structural capacity issue, that they were able to locate here in this corner of the rooftop without requiring roof probes, without requiring any additional kind of capacity infrastructure or anything that would affect the rooftop's capacity to support additional weight. And that by locating it here in the corner, they were able to avoid all these engineering issues. And so that is, that is essentially why they went to this location. And try to ask them for further information for that.
For the engineering issues, for the reason why?
Absolutely.
The reason.
But again, even with an engineering report for the reason why, arguably, it's not within the discretion of the board because.
No, no, we're not saying you can't have your antenna. That, that's played federal law, it's your antenna. But it doesn't state that you can't put something, something to cover up the outside of the antenna so it doesn't look like a little post in the air. It doesn't say anything about that you can't paint it, doesn't, or ask, for us to ask you to paint it. It doesn't say that you could put the equipment wherever, when the past, the prior, Verizon's label are asked to put it, and they will, they said, and that's how it was unfair. So that's what you say, uh, sorry to stand in your way. That's okay. Are you familiar with what happened, 43 years on in Austin?
Yeah, section eight point one five.
Yes. And number two, what we're trying to do is we're trying to predominantly suburban residents, sorry, this is suburban residents, not the city. Okay? You go down to New York City, you go to Yonkers, you go to Westchester, and you got these antennas hanging off the buildings that are just, this is a shelter. We'd like to keep it a shelter. And we'd like to try and maintain that look, okay? We took over, we took over NIAC and, um, not to say that it wouldn't be the same with Verizon and everything like that, but I had a case with Verizon when I was on the after war. Verizon wanted to put antennas up on the Duncan Domens in Flow River. We had them concealed, with screen on, okay? Painted the same. You couldn't tell that it was, that it was the same antenna, but we people did believe it. So what we're trying to do is we're trying to keep the suburban look here. All right?
I appreciate your comment, but again, the antennas that are existing there, as I showed in my photos, are not only visible on this building, but the surrounding building. So we're, we're not really making a significant impact to that. And from DISH's standpoint, the federal law states that the town is required to approve this application as long as we meet those six objective criteria. The local code is preempted by the federal law. And, and I, I do appreciate where you're, where you're coming from. I hundred percent appreciate where you're coming from. But for here, I think you're asking for us to do stuff that'll have no benefit because you already have these.
No benefit?
Correct.
Benefit to the people around here?
Well, if, if you let me finish, the photos that I showed today, all vantage points where you're going to be looking at this property, you already see existing antennas above the parapet.
I understand, but I don't want to make it any worse than what it is. I can't do anything about what happened in the past.
But for here, you're also limited to what you can do too because of the federal law. The, the antennas are not the only things that are covered by the eligible facilities request. It's also the equipment cabinets, the entire installation. And from, from their standpoint, again, where their antennas are located at the edge of the rooftop, to put up a screen wall, it may not be able to be done because for this small antenna, to put up a screen wall like that, it's just going to look like a larger antenna. And speaking with them, there's also structural issues. Sometimes when you put a screen wall here at this corner of a building, especially at the edge of Hudson River, if you don't have something really good to structurally hold it down to, it becomes a wind sail. So there, there are reasons why they proposed it as this. They are painting the antennas though, so they are including the antennas to paint to match. But there are also, it's a balance here. It's not just trying to make this look as best as possible. It also has to function as is the wireless network that they're trying to propose. So the reasons why they've located it at the edge of the rooftops are mainly RF reasons. So that's the reason why they're locating here. It's for the radio frequency engineering design of the facility. They needed their antennas in these locations. Now, what we can do to conceal them was we painted them to match the building, which is what we saw where the existing antennas from Verizon. And that is what the Village of South Niantic required. Now, as far as relocating the, the equipment cabinets, I would also note that, you know, those comments and discussions in there, one of the main things that Verizon changed in the planning board or Village of South Niantic is they actually had an equipment shelter. They had a whole building they were building up there. So it switched from the equipment shelters to the equipment cabinets. And then that was one of the main reductions they did. And then when they put the equipment cabinets, they put it at the front edge of the building or the edge of the building that's facing the Tappan Zee Bridge. And that was able for them to put their antennas on top of that equipment cabinet. So the reason why.
So then, excuse me. So by putting the equipment cabinet on the corner of the building, and you stated that you want to try and protect these dishes because of the wind and everything that comes off the Hudson River, would it be better if it was in the center of the building?
No, yeah, so the, the reasons why the antennas are located at the edge of the building is for radio frequency engineering design. The things that I said may get caught by wind would be if you asked us to put up a screen wall, just a wall to block the antenna, which would essentially look like just a larger antenna blocking the antenna, that screen wall by itself just being pinned to the parapet, that may have a structural issue for, that becomes a wind sail now. So I've seen in other sites where you have these screen walls, sometimes locating them at the very edge of the parapet, at the very edge of the roof, becomes a problem because it's now structural engineering nightmare to try to make sure that that's pinned to the building and won't fly off or won't damage the building.
So are you using those satellite vertical type of antennas or are you using like a ditch?
So they're vertical antennas, as you can see from the photo simulations, is, this is what they're proposing right here. It's one single antenna on three different corners of the rooftop. So it's significantly much less than what's already there on site. And again, I, I appreciate your comments where you're coming from. I completely understand trying to better this and make it, you know, better for all those in the community that are going to see this. But I would really implore you to look at the photos I took, look at the photo simulations because I think these three additional antennas and even the equipment cabinets are really not going to have a significant impact compared to what the surrounding views of this site are today. I think from all the surrounding views of the site, you have two buildings here, we have visible equipment above the parapets and visible to the public. All we're trying to do is locate the equipment at the site that already exists so that there's not a need for us to locate on a clean rooftop or to build a new tower in the area. So this is actually eliminating the need for an installation of the clean roof or an installation on a brand new tower. And this is something that the federal government wanted to encourage because here they can, you know, co-locate and they can deploy their, their facilities, but they're also using it at a place that, you know, the community's already decided that this is a structure that can support this type of equipment.
Well, I'm just trying to make it better. Getting to your radio frequency, your study here. Could you, could you go through this, the different colors and what it means exactly? I'm not that familiar with this, with the radio frequencies.
I, I also rely on my RF engineers for that information.
Yeah, it's just showing.
Yes. It's basically the green is, is one coverage level and then the orange is a different coverage level. But exactly as everybody's saying, it's showing that the primary goal for the coverage here is to cover the Tappan Zee Bridge and the surrounding areas. So if you go to, where we go to the, the, the coverage maps, we started the pages, they low van plots. You go to that? So here, the first map, this is a coverage map. So right here, if you look at the bottom, they have these different coverage levels. These are in DBMs, 96 to negative 20, then they have 101 to negative 96, negative 110 to negative 101. And that's dark green, we'll call it medium green or light green, and orange. And those are different signal propagation levels. Usually you can refer to this as the dark green being in-building coverage. So that would be a signal level that's strong enough to make sure that it can penetrate through a brick wall and actually get to someone making a cell phone call in their house. This, this kind of coverage of 101 to negative 96, usually call that in-vehicle coverage. That means the signal level is strong enough to get into your car and so you can make a cell phone call from your car. And then all these orange areas, the 110 to 101, those are areas that are considered, again, less than reliable coverage. Again, though, as this application is an eligible facilities request, there is a, a local preemption on kind of justifying our need for this based on coverage, based on capacity. However, we wanted to make sure, as a, as a good faith gesture, we did provide this information to town. I understand sometimes towns, even if they don't use it for a particular application, may like to have a record of it for future applications. And then we also have, I'm not sure if you go to this next, we do have an FCC compliance report. And that is a report that certifies that with all the radio frequency emissions coming from the site, that the emission levels will still be low, lower than the threshold level set by the FCC for deeming a site safe.
Just trying to, there's, there's a statement, it's the letter from.
Mr. Gray?
Gray, where he states that one year mass, or three year mass.
It's the March 19th, 2023 letter. Yeah, Mr. Gray took, took issue with Mr. Mudar, RF justification report. He did have some comments. Mostly he says it's curious. He thinks that there's probably a capacity issue here. But again, as, as a federal law, I mean, it's, it's a preempted issue for this type of application. We don't have to justify a provided business decision for co-locating here. That would be something that would be required for if they were going to put up a new tower or locate on a new clean rooftop where there's no existing infrastructure. This is probably trying to accomplish, I won't call it excessive, but making sure that it has overlapping coverage with the existing sites that are surrounding and making sure that there is a good amount of coverage and capacity on the Tappan Zee Bridge and the 87th thruway.
Yeah, but he says, he says, you're, on one of your grass or one of your, your, uh, your standalone or anything, the justification looked like it was the same. So the, the, the beginning of your, of the, uh, your radio frequencies are the same as what you are trying to state while you leave. So if, if you're, if, if what is there now, and when you're finished, is the same as what is there now, how can you justify that?
So two points. What I've been mentioning earlier is that, so there's federal law that comes with this application and there is a preemption on that. So, but also just from a standpoint of practical, it's company.
But does the federal law say that it's justified if it's the same as in the beginning and then at the end?
No, but the federal law says is that once it's an eligible facilities request, the town is preempted from asking for a reason why we're locating here, such as proving the need for the facility, providing a justification. This report was provided, again, as a good faith gesture, but it's, it's not an application we're, we're going over. I can ask the RF engineer to provide additional information, but if, if I was reading this report and I do a lot of these sites, this site is, is an important site that they're trying to get coverage to this area of thruway as well as the Tappan Zee Bridge. And it's, it's an important point to note that all of the other existing carriers that are operating in the country have their facilities on this property. So it, it does stand reason that there is a need for this facility here. All of the other carriers have their facilities located on this property. I can have them, you know, maybe, you know, provide a supplemental letter for the RF justification, just as again, without, you know, waiving any rights, it's a good faith gesture, but they obviously wouldn't spend the money to build this site if there wasn't they obviously wouldn't spend the money to build this site if there wasn't a need for coverage for this site.
Well, that's what I don't understand, because in one, one of your graphs, your two graphs, one in the B and one in the A, shows it the same, so I can't understand what this meant.
Mr. Andrews, maybe I'll interject, because I know there's probably going to be a need for me to interject. This is a very heavy, heavily regulated area, the FCC, it's very complicated. I believe most of what the applicant's attorney has said is accurate. There is preemption, it doesn't sound fair, but the federal government has taken away some of the authority of this board to do what the board would like to do, or what people in the audience may have liked the board to do. The applicant's attorney, I believe, was accurate in saying, the justification is just not an issue. I would recommend we not waste time on it, because if you deny it for that, he will sue and we will lose. Justification is not an issue. It was provided-
Well, I just, I just wanted-
Understand.
Clarification.
Understand.
I don't understand.
Uh, as a, as an offer of, well, as an offer of a good faith gesture, I can ask my RF engineer to provide a supplemental letter just for this board.
Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm like, if we're out.
Can she answer?
Um, stranger's cover a lot, will say everything that I wanted to ask, um, I just wanted to, that's okay, no. Um, just wanted to confirm that the radio frequency emission report, um, and the levels of, uh, radio frequency, fall, falls well below the FCC level?
Correct, uh, I believe it's thirty-something percent. So, uh, we have a pinnacle telecom report. Um, so, and this report certifies on page four, um, that the, on the rooftop, the, uh, in the vicinity of the dish antennas, the worst-case result is thirty-eight point two eight percent. And then at the street level, it's eight point one five two percent. Um, I will admit, Mr. Graef had some comments about how the FCC compliance report was put together. Um, it didn't appear to include the antennas from the neighboring rooftop site. However, Mr. Graef does certify at the end of his report, he just had some comments about the process, not the end result of the report. Um, but if you'd like, we can have this updated and confirmed. But with these numbers, I'm like a hundred percent positive, it'll be below the threshold level, even including the antennas from the building next door. So it includes the existing antennas on this building, it just didn't include the ones on the building next door.
Got a question?
Mr. McLaury?
Uh, thank you, Mike. Um, thanks to Town Lawyer, we know what kind of limited to, uh, we can, uh, do here. So I just want to go back to you, Greg. Uh, our town has a code eight point one five. Is that, uh, will that, will that ever come into play?
Dave and I have some, perhaps disagreement on the concealment, and especially with the prior decision from South Niac. I, it seems like Dave is willing to work with the board to, as much as is possible, do some type of concealment.
Because in, in that code, it says, uh, the planning board can issue a special permit, is that? Are we doing that tonight?
Is that the application?
Yeah, no, it's not a special permit, it's a location. It's a special permit, it was a new location.
All right, just wanted to add, and it says, review and approval by ACAB, is that? All right, so that's in the code, and we're not, that doesn't come into play yet.
Not in this case.
All right, just asking. Uh, one of the things I understand is the existing structure, it's, I think that's a better move than building a new tower.
Tower.
You know, that would just be a, a big reveal. Like, like Andy pointed out, EC is all over the place. You know, the height, this is probably the biggest building in town. That's why I understand why everybody wants to put their stuff on there. Uh, what I don't like is how they did the old way, the flush mounted. I don't know why this would be better than your sticking above, you understand?
Okay, right, are you saying that you don't like flush mounting?
No, I, I understand why, being above the parapet, you're, you're further away from the, the residence.
Yeah.
If you look at the flush mounted, they open up their windows right above their windows. I don't understand how this is better alternative than sticking above the roof. I understand it's a visual thing, but I, I couldn't imagine putting more flush mounted around right above the window, it's, that's-
That, that was kind of the reasoning why they said they were sensitive to the fact that emissions would be clearly outside this person's window. And then also, where the existing antennas are for Verizon, there may be an interference issue, because we're now so close to each other, the, the signals may bounce.
Yeah, they're already in the center.
Yeah, no, for the center as well, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's, like you said, it's, there's really no good alternative here. Uh, the only thing I, I wonder about, we have is the city, in where I work, uh, from the fire department standpoint, there's issues with access to the roof. They don't want to stay in, in six feet of these things. So there is some issues, and I guess our fire department didn't put any comments in. But I know in the city, we are concerned about, you know, when we have problems on the roof, if there's a fire on there, uh, where the shut-offs are, and, and stuff like that, that, so that should be incorporated into the plan, is make sure, if there is an emergency up there, you have to have signage that says where the shut-off is. You know, where, uh, there should be something in the basement, there, there's a button in the basement, and that all has to be signed out. And the, the doors have to have the signage on where the shut-off is, where, you know, the backup generators are, right? The stuff they have, what, what's the stuff in the basement?
So they don't have anything in the basement right now, that's where the power connections are and stuff. But exactly to your point, this was actually, uh, is a common thing that we have for rooftop sites. So there's two ways to do it. One is that the, uh, for the Verizon and the eighteen T installation, there's already an emergency su- shut-off for the power. So that's in the basement, so that the fire department or building manager, if there's a fire, can audit by themselves, shut down the site. There's also going to be the signs that you requested, those would be at the rooftop access doors, as well as probably if there's an equipment room in the basement, they may put it there as well, where the shut-off is. On that, uh, sign, there'll be a number for a twenty-four-hour emergency call number for DISH. So if you can't shut it off yourself, you can also call DISH, they'll power down the antennas while there's a situation.
Yeah, we, we have that comment-
Yeah, it's been worked out, yeah.
Uh, so, that was discussed at PRC, briefly touched on, as well as-
Yes.
Um, Mr. Majeski, the current fire inspector, was actually the building inspector when the Verizon was first approved. And those were some of his comments back then, so I'm sure he will, he will confirm that as those items are installed.
All right. Uh, I, I think that's, that's, that's it for me, I know, like, it's still limited, there's no AC board, no special permit, um, yeah, no, that's it.
So, they're going to be located?
Sure.
What, they're going to, we can get brick?
Yeah, painted the same color as the Verizon antennas to match the brick. And we can, as part of the building permit process, we can provide some color swatches, and even have, um, the town kind of prefer which color choices most closely match the brick.
And one of the, I don't know if we even have the ability to access, one of the comments was for them to be at the parapet, all the way at the edge, and extended above them was due to RF interference. So is there, in the Verizon, or competitors, and head of their, either flush mounted, like Mr. McLaury pointed out, or in the center? Was there a study, or is there a study where we can do the, the standoff from those existing antennas? So that we can maybe have it offset from the past a little bit, just to diminish, um, that overhang right there? Because like, the center is visible, for sure, but it is, it is slightly offset, so it, it diminishes the impact?
So I, I can absolutely ask, um, I think the answer is going to be no, it's, it's two points. One is again, so if we, if we are located on the parapet, this wasn't a main component, but it was also we saved a structural issue by locating it on pipe mounts attached to the parapet. And again, the, the antennas have to physically clear the parapet, it's a line-of-sight technology. So even if we move it further back, the mount will then just have to get taller. So even though Verizon and ATTs are in the center of the roof, they're located on higher points of the roof of the bulkhead, so it, it's, it may not have the intended effect that you're asking for, because while it may be setback from the edge of the roof, it'll then just be taller and the same visibility. And I think where it's located at the corners is not so much of the interference, as well as they're trying to point the directions of the antennas where they're intending the service to go.
They're not making any additional noise to what's up there?
No, no, there's no generator proposed, so, no, everything's a non-noise, non-vibration.
Um, I think, putting it inside the parapet is the right idea, I think. The, the way these other ones look are, is frankly, they're, they're ugly. And, and this new one is going to, in my opinion, look a lot better, right? You're going to have, it's going to be about a forty-foot parapet wall, the majority of it. So the majority of it will be concealed by the parapet, and it'll, and it'll still have the antennas.
From, from some vantage points, but no, I think, if you could see from the viewpoints, the, again, the goal is the whole antenna's really got to be above the parapet, because it's the line-of-sight technology. So it's, it's the pipe mount will be attached to the parapet, and as you can see here, it's like a little bit of the pipe mount, and then the antenna.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry.
So, yeah, I'm with, there's a lot of people here, so I'd like to give a poll, and see, um, we'll all put it up after, after Tara speaks.
Just to be clear, though, we would not enforce HOA requirements?
No, no, it's a, it's a-
So, but, you know, we don't know.
Yeah, I'm also not aware, but, well, no, the colors would be before this board, because one of the things we do have to do, because the existing Verizon antennas are painted to match, we do have to make sure our antennas are also painted to match.
So that's my question, is these antennas are painted to match to blend in with the wall, because they're against the wall? So when you stick something into the air, why wouldn't you want it to match? Why wouldn't you want it to be white, for example, so it's not so obviously sticking on the-
We can absolutely propose that, if that's something-
I feel like it, it looks like, you know, the beginning stages of a NASA building. You know, like, it's covered in satellites and antennas, and I don't know if it makes sense to make something that's sticking into the air even more obvious by painting it the darkest color.
So, let, let me, uh, just kind of explain, I guess, I guess, why their reasoning is. Again, these antennas that stick above the parapet for Verizon, the ones that aren't flush-mounted, are also painted to match. So the first thing we're trying to do is comply with what is the existing concealment element, which is painting to match. The second thing is, is that although some of these views, you're going to see the, uh, just the sky behind, there are going to be some views where you're going to see these antennas, and then see that bulkhead as the background. So again, if, there are some views where it does work, and there are some views where maybe painting it like the sky may look better. Honestly, whichever the board wants, I have no objection to painting it whatever.
If I hold it up, you can see the brick, what you can't see are the white satellites. Right? I mean, you can see them, but it's not, it doesn't change the circular going, so maybe that's just a nitpicking point. But I would imagine that if you're trying to camouflage something, you don't camouflage it with the opposite color.
Correct, mostly if I was going to a new rooftop site, and then we were posing these antennas up, I probably would have tried to make the argument that leaving them uncolored would have had the better self-design. But because there's existing antennas here painted, I have to match that, or I have to get, uh, relief from this board that says you prefer the white antennas, or prefer a different color antenna. But from my standpoint, we can paint them green, I don't, I don't mind what color you want.
I'll also make the argument, though, that the birds might plan to live in the white.
Yeah.
Well, the conduits outside the building as well. Is there any chance you could run the conduits inside, because there are some type of chase you can find inside the building, or whatever?
So the conduits, again, that, they're, that's the existing ones, if you can see from, so we're just using the existing chase, so to speak. So we're not adding anything new, but, you know, we're trying to route it in the same ways that the existing carriers have. Yeah, we'll, we'll paint it the town school colors, whatever you guys want, the color of the high school football.
Yeah, I mean, the, the power lines are worse than that.
Yeah. So you're in, you power lines are on the rooftop, and you'll use-
We're going to use the existing, uh, conduits and chase, and the power lines will go through those. No, we're, we're using the same. The only new, um, that's going on the rooftop is on the actual rooftop itself, they're the cable tracks. But that's, yeah, that's on the rooftop, not in-
Twenty-six, it shows it going down, opposed to by bird grabbing conduits? It doesn't, they, it's really the same?
Yeah, I'll double-check with them, but this should have been matching and going through the same exact, um, so I'll confirm with them. But this could have been something where they're either going through the same cable track.
Question. Greg, I think it was mentioned before, but, uh, probably the power, uh, shut-offs, the power's going to shut off in the basement?
Uh, so there's two ways, one is that there's an emergency shut-off switch in the basement, for the entire power, and that's already in existence for Verizon AT and T. Second will be a phone number for twenty-four hours, um, that anyone from the town can call. If there's an emergency, they'll shut it off remotely.
Okay, so we might get posted down, and then have it go calling out for a roof.
If I could just respond to her comment real quick about the conduits? So, sure, so again, I think they're supposed to be routing the same, but the, the area that you showed right here, um, if they were going to route it down, it would be right behind that tree. But I'll have them confirm exactly what they were supposed to do, um, I think it was supposed to be routed in the same pattern.
We also, also on the, uh, the rooftop, I know Verizon put something around it, but, uh, place some sort of plastic, whatever, around the equipment, like the six-foot thing, the protection responders.
So, that's only required if our antennas on the rooftop exceed the emission levels. So I, I can ask them if they can place it, but again, these types of barriers, why Verizon installed it, was because there were certain areas on the rooftop directly in front of Verizon's antennas at the time of its installation that exceeded the threshold levels. So what they needed to do is they needed to put those chain-link barriers around, so that anyone going into that area in front of their antennas would be aware of. Here, we don't have that issue, because we're below the threshold level. So there's, there's really no area that's accessible on the rooftop by dishes and antennas that are exceeding that threshold level and require that kind of barrier.
And you still worry about the equipment cabinet, with the antennas?
No, just the antennas.
Okay, since you brought it up earlier, um, so I'm talking about the, they want to put the, um, the equipment cabinet by the edge of the roof, the, so it felt was a structural issue, capacity. You know, like, if, if there's any sort of issue, we sort of, regarding the capacity, a structural issue, I think we should have the next year's report stating the fact that the, uh, has the roof's capacity, the whole of the equipment, how much is that equipment weighed anyway, that cabinet, do you know offhand?
Not off of hand, it's probably in the, in hundreds of pounds, not thousands, but-
Okay, it's not in the tons range?
No, 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 not at all.
Okay.
It's a single equipment cabinet, and we do have, uh, a report from our, our, our engineer about the current location that shows it's all compliant structural apartments. And Mr. Graef did review that report and said it would have met the requirement.
Yeah, because it's, it's lightweight, I don't see why you move back a couple of feet from the edge of the roof, so it's kind of visible.
I, I understand, and I'll ask them for, for further information on that, but the information I was provided was that to locate into the center of a roof would require roof probes, would probably require some structural reinforcement. And so, once they learned that that was the possibility, they found that this location wouldn't require any of that. And then the building owner strongly preferred that we go into this location and not require any of that additional stuff.
We should have a report from the engineer stating that, that it can't be moved back through the structural issues, the corners, is where the, uh, it has, doesn't create a structural problem.
I'll see if I can get a letter to further support that.
Yeah, hopefully, otherwise it, uh, as far as we know, it's the roof is structurally sound to hold anything up there. I mean, it has another cabinet up there, your radio cabinets, we'd like to know the weight. We're talking about the safety issue with the people that we go up, not from the RS, which-
Absolutely.
The RRE reports are the RS, I believe, near the thing, and Mr. Graef said that, that the, uh, the requirements by the federal government for the emission levels are above all, but the really actual ones would be for dangerous, uh, emissions.
Uh, I can ask for them to further confirm that, but again, um, the requirement before the board is also, as long as we show that we're an eligible facilities request.
Yeah, maybe eligible facility, but if there's a structural problem, we have responsibility, due diligence, the people who live there, to make sure that the rooftop is structurally sound, the whole of the fence, the equipment up there, and all of the other portion.
But for this applicant, we've already submitted a structural report that says that the rooftop can support where we're currently locating. So before you, there's no structural issues with this current design. Um, and again, I refer you to Mr. Graef's report, um, he even confirms in his report that he says, you know, in my cover letter, I go through the requirements of an eligible facilities request, and he says, as your, you know, wireless expert, it does- And he says, as your wireless expert, it does appear that the requirements of the eligible facilities are met.
Does appear.
So we but that's his opinion as your expert. And and once it's confirmed that we're an eligible facilities request, there's a shall approve standard. So I I'm no problem in asking as a good faith gesture for this engineer letter, but if they come back and say, you know, it was just preferred, you know, based on the building owner because they didn't want to do probes to do a significant, you know, structural design of the rooftop and that this was not requiring that and also was able to provide a report that shows that this current location is meeting all the state and federal, local requirements for structural installations, it is kind of out of the hands of the town.
Well, once you get a letter that states that.
But you you don't even need that letter because once once your once your expert said this is an eligible facilities request at this current location.
We're talking about eligible facility, not talking about structural issue. I'm talking about a structural issue.
But there's no structural issue for where we're currently located and this design has been proposed to the town.
Okay, just show me what your engineer says that is structurally sound. Is that Abdul engineering?
Correct, that's the Abdul engineering and Mr. Gray even says in the report, the antenna Mount Alamos has quite done well, indicates what Mr. Abdul believes demonstrates compliance with the required structural requirements. Yeah, it's it's essentially and you know, again, as a good faith gesture, I don't mind providing that additional information. I just want I just want to set the expectations that if they come back and say it's it's really also like a landlord issue that he didn't want to do roof probes and all the other information that would have required to get you that structural report about what's going on in the center of the roof, that where we're located is still compliant with federal law and still requires approval.
Yeah, we're just trying to let you tell us.
I. With this particular location, there's no concern, but I appreciate where it comes from.
Right, so if you get that from the engineering, also the the science that you can put on the door and down the basement, um, with the phone number.
Yep.
And yes, could you, could you also include the weight of that cabinet? The structural weight of the cabinet, please?
Yeah, it should be in the report anyway.
Right.
You can't do it without.
A couple hundred pounds, I don't see why it won't be able to be put.
I think it's in hundreds of pounds, not thousands, maybe a little bit more than a couple hundred, but yeah, I'll.
Mr. Chairman, if you want to note that on the second page of the consultant's letter, second paragraph, he actually states, this report is beyond the expertise of this engineer as far as the structural analysis. So in no way does Mr. Gray said that he's reviewed the structural components.
Are you talking about that four point zero in that report?
No, Ronald Graves, he is.
Oh, great, sorry, I was looking at the.
Second page.
Yeah, he does say have a qualified.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Yeah.
The second paragraph, the report is beyond the expertise of this engineer and therefore is highly recommended that your board hire qualified professional structural engineer to review and comment on the report. So if there is, I just wanted to be clear that this engineer only looked at the radio frequency.
Did not look at the structural.
And the other facility, not the structural.
Just to be clear, I've represented many applicants in front of many boards. Mr. Gray, this is the first time he's ever declined to issue an opinion on a structural report. He's he's qualified, but I'm more than happy to have the town have another structural engineer review our reports.
Okay, yeah, because I'm looking at Abdul engineering and on page four, this is the four point zero, standard conditions for engineering services on existing structures, structural design analysis are based on that and this is on section one, so this is it, it is assumed, and assume this is a common fact, that structures to maintain and shall be maintained during its service, the superstructure and the foundations of them are assumed to be designed with proper engineering practices, fabrication, construction, and erected importance for the design documents. Abdul engineering would say no liability, which may arise due to any existing deficiency in design, material fabrication, direction, construction, etc., or lack of maintenance. Contract should inspect the condition of existing structure, non-same connections, and notify Abdul engineering of any deficiencies and discrepancies before proceeding with the construction. Okay, so I'm I'm that's that's your your.
I know that's absolutely, it's a very common limiting statement that they like to put.
But they like that he's putting assumed, he's he's assuming, yeah, it looks good to me.
I'll I'll have them update the report and clarify that. The assumptions are, again, is the underlying building structure. So what they're doing is is they didn't dig out the concrete of the foundation and inspect the foundation. They didn't probe all the floors of the of the building. So they are making assumptions about how the building's characteristics are.
Well, I'm looking, I'm looking upstairs, I'm going to ask if there's sod there at the foundation and work their way up. I'm looking for the rooftop itself, the structural foundation of that roof. Is that roof capable of holding additional weight? The weight of that thing, the additional, can it, you know, could it be moved in five feet or three feet where it would be visible from the street? Or is that roof in fact not capable of holding any additional weight?
So again, the again, the reason for the location in the corner is that we don't put any additional weight on the rooftop. They're able to here, if you go into the drawings, they're able to pin the platforms into the parapet. So that was the whole point of being in the corner is that they can actually have it be a raised platform that's not sitting and putting its loading onto the rooftop.
The the engineer was saying it's being mounted into this, the parapet is structurally sound, rooftop where we're putting the platform is structurally sound, that's all, because you know, there are people underneath it and that's why I think we could ask that question and answer that.
I think he said he'll provide, I think we should move on, we've got a lot of people here.
Okay, that sounds good.
Sure, we can provide that.
Glenn wants to know from the public.
Yes.
Mr. Farrelly second.
Second.
This one and all favor.
All right.
Anybody from the public would you wish to speak, please, from that station, name, your address, and you have three minutes to speak. Would anybody like to comment on the person speaking before you? And you just, you don't want to go to a two minute thing and say, I'm so and so, I do agree with the person before me and their comments on what they want to item or whatever. So please, anybody would like to speak on this project? Anybody like to speak on this project? Hearing none. Second, okay, then Mr. Farrelly, this one and a half second, all favor?
All right.
Will you ever be eight on over?
Maybe the continuance, then you can provide everything you can do as soon.
All right. Very best bet to now, this is a fitting within, I won't say, when can we come back again, early tomorrow. Now, then, you said information, I'll try to know that.
Okay, I I have to I have to make this statement for my client. So there is, as we said, there's there's a 60 day review period. And there's also the fact that beyond the 60 day review period, once it's determined that this application is an eligible facilities request, it's a shall approve standard. So dish wireless would respectfully request that this board make a determination on whether or not this application is an eligible facilities request and then abide by federal law and issue the approval.
Those still questions we have on that structural?
With all due respect, the questions on the structure were related to whether or not we could relocate the equipment. The structural report does certify that we can locate in our addition, our equipment where it is. If the question is whether or not you can have a structural engineer re-review our report and give you additional.
I I read what the engineer said, he can't, assumes all this, and my statement that this is fact.
But the assumes, the assumptions that were made have to do with the underlying structure and how it was maintained. And so again, I've I've done a lot of these applications, those are well within the assumptions that engineers make all the time about existing structures.
Parapets are 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 epiphanous for not being structurally sound in the building.
That that can be a condition as well, that he can, you can approve it and he'll come back with proof that it is structurally sound if the board is satisfied.
Was it a final or preliminary?
Preliminary? I think he's asking for a final. He's got a big argument that he's entitled to a final.
The final will be based upon the conditions that you have to.
Come back and show that it's structurally sound.
Sound.
We can do that, that's absolutely fine.
He's not coming back to the board.
For our to the building department.
Yeah.
If you give final, he doesn't.
Right, that's all things.
Final conditions that the engineer report, this is structurally sound, right?
Absolutely. And we can provide that to the building department and if you would like to retain another structural engineer to review the report, we're happy to provide escrow for that as well.
Is that satisfying to you or should I go with preliminary and just come back with the report?
Whoever makes the board comes to both of them.
Maybe do it to the bodies.
Yeah. I was saying, motion approved, final conditions. They come back personally.
It would be three weeks. Mr. Chairman.
Just like everybody else with the conditional.
Mr. Chairman, James. They could be heard first at the next meeting if the board wanted to see that report.
So you can.
Yeah, give many, I mean technically it's just continued to the next meeting.
Is what, April 12?
Yes.
April 12. You'd be the first one on.
With with all respect, just just to ask, if if the structural report is just going to be reviewed by a structural engineer and confirmed it meets all local state and code requirements, what would an appearance before this board?
We're asking for a structural engineer to certify that that parapet is sound and that roof under it is sound.
Absolutely agree, but why would that have, why would that require another appearance before this board? Couldn't that be done at the building department stage?
No, because it's the improvements proved as is and it's.
Mr. Mandel, if they don't come back with that, then that condition is not.
We would have to come back before the board.
If you make it a condition, I'm, on a local level, I cannot issue a permit unless the condition is met. So if you want to make it a condition.
Oh, yes.
If the letter comes in.
Parapet inspection for the for the condition, the structural engineer parapet inspection?
Well, yeah, the structural report is that that's what you guys want.
Yeah, we want a structural report.
We've submitted a structural report. I would first ask that we hire the the structural person that is qualified to review the report, review the report we submitted, and if there's comments or questions about that report, we can work it.
The team has a comment on the parapet, he says, I assume that this and this and this, I would like to know.
Right, but Mr. Mandel, the applicant did state that he's willing to submit escrow to allow for an independent structural engineer to review it. So if the board felt to move it forward, they could do that, make that a condition, the escrow check is received, then a structural engineer, consulting structural engineer can look at it and provide their findings, be independent.
That's absolutely acceptable.
But if the rooftop is structurally sound, so that they can put the cabinet in the center of the roof.
That's not, that's not what I was taking from this conversation.
All right. On this one, about people.
We don't want to, we don't want to create a sunroof into anybody's apartment either.
Right, so my understanding from this conversation was that the concern is the way this structural engineer's report was presented.
Right.
That you're not comfortable with that certification.
Right.
That you would like an independent structural engineer to review it.
Right.
And state that the report is sufficient and the parapet.
Is sound.
In the installation as proposed on the parapet is structurally sound and meets code.
Right.
Is that correct?
Absolutely.
Yes, that's correct.
So that's the condition.
Okay.
Escrow amount will have to be submitted and I will just reach out, we have a number of consulting engineers that we deal with that will see who can take it on in the most efficient manner and go from there.
And and if it comes out that there's significant issues with the structural report, happy to come back before this board and try to deal with any of those issues.
And if there's a structural issue, I don't think the FCC overrides that.
Correct, we we don't want, yeah, we still have to build things to make sure that they stay standing.
I'm not going to issue a permit on something that is not safe.
And we're not going to force issuance of a permit for something that's going to fall down.
Dr. Parapet said they're always.
Absolutely understood.
All right, do I have a motion for final with conditions?
We want secret.
Secret first.
Oh, a motion for lead agency.
Motion for lead agency.
Andrew second, Ms. Lenahan, all favor?
All right.
Motion for negative debt. Mr. Mr. Farrelly, second, Ms. Lenahan, all favor?
All right.
Okay. Final, who was maybe the motion to get the final with conditions, that was?
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Fischian, okay. Also building claim, there's only claim administration enforcement dated March 2023, there are three conditions. Okay, the statements we already put.
Well, my position doesn't, one of my comments basically doesn't apply because it's recommended to move it to the center of the room.
Okay, so, all right.
Remove that comment.
All right, also building, there's only claim administration enforcement, March 2023, two decisions, one and three, number two has been removed. Department final master engineering dated, excuse me, March 17, 2023. You have one comment, Marsha Rockman, you have, I don't know, I think that's it, um, comment, the third one is, did you have that written down yet?
James can.
I took out your comment and then the additional condition for the independent, for the structural report for installation of the parapet, the escrows to be determined is there.
And then you also mentioned the emergency shut off exists in the basement and can be shut off remotely, you want that signed.
With also.
Sign is on the door. Phone number.
Absolutely.
And the.
Sign in the basement and the sign on the door, noting the shut off location and the shut off phone number.
Yep.
Yes, the whole locations.
What about the question you had about using the existing conduits and you just want to confirm that on the plans?
If if we can, if I can just show, I kind of answered that question while I was looking through the structural report. Sorry to bring it up. But the structural report actually has photos of the different locations and you can see the existing cables there that they're located. So it says where where it shows the probes, the equipment platform here, you can see there's existing, there's existing conduits going down, so they're routing it with those existing conduits. So it's different than the chase that we show at the front of the building, but they are they are locating with these existing conduits. So this is the proposed location of the equipment platform. So it it is, we can have that clarified on the plans, but just as a point, you know, you can see from the photos of the site, there are the existing cables going.
Your power cables going to go, coexisting, the cables that are there.
Right here, the yeah, the coexistence. And as again, the photo sims also show, there's a really nice tree right in front of these cables, so you kind of block.
Okay, so that that would be a condition that the that the cable be coexist, will be attached by the coexisting cable for the power.
It it's already shown on the plan, so you can say I have shown on the plans or however it's easiest.
Okay, and the, read that last one again to us, Steve, not that one, first one with the with the structural engineer, if you have.
Oh, the additional condition for an independent structural report for installation on the parapet escrow to be determined and submitted?
I think that just speaks to the escrow. I think you want it further to say, in such structural report will be reviewed, sorry.
The additional condition is that the board would like a study of the existing structural analysis by an independent structural engineer. And the escrow amount will be supplied by the applicant.
And we should put that in there, especially to determine.
You're paying 20 bucks.
One of the clients is getting cell phone telephones. Yeah.
And specifically to determine that the parapet that can, is capable of supporting the, supporting the cabinet.
I'll proofread it too. That we got it right.
All right, we're good. For second. Hey, Mr. Corio, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much for your time.
Do we take a five-minute break? Time is now nine thirty-five. Ladies and gentlemen, please have a quiet seat. Ladies and gentlemen, meeting of March twenty-second, twenty twenty-three is concluding at nine thirty. You have more questions, board, or present floor, still present?
Would you give a summary of your practice notes?
Sure. I am Joe Ariel with Delvello, Denellen, and Weingarten. We are the attorneys on both applications for the applicant. And as you know, the project has been before you in various iterations for several years now. We came back in January with revised plans based on previous comments that we had from your consultants and from the PRC over the years, and we have employed mitigation measures and hired a wetlands consultant that submitted a report on this and even submitted SWIP documents, which is a little premature at this stage of review, but we're happy to do it in order to give you some information. We have further comments on that from your engineer and we have comments, as I'm sure you'll relate, from your zoning administrator. We are confident that we can address the site planning issues. And what we wanted to do is make sure that we got this board's comments so that before we invested in any further revisions, given how long this has been moving through your board, we wanted to make sure that we had all comments on the plan that was submitted. So our primary goal this evening actually is to, is to get a secret determination. Obviously, we recognize that there are site planning comments that that we still have to address and we're happy to do that. I have Steve Sparacco here and Jake is here with the owners. Steve, if you'd like, can can walk you through the two, the two plans. Just describe what we're doing and other than that, obviously, chair meeting.
Sure, sure. All right, so this is, good evening members of the board. This is the one twenty-five Green Bush project. And again, let me go for more project than the next, just to keep them a little separate. There's an existing building there, warehouse building. It's got existing loading docks. And the applicant is proposing to take down a portion in the front and expand it by one hundred forty-seven thousand square feet. This plan has, in particular, has four hundred sixty-eight parking on site. And it's got also eighty parking, or eighty parking and loading docks combined for the truck. To give a dock or park on the side. Moving along, we've got, since our last submission, we've done. As Joe had indicated, we prepared stone work, which will prevent your plans for both projects. The drainage is largely the same as it was proposed before, just with a micro documentation behind it. And we'll go to the drainage plan. And there's a system in the back for attenuation and water quality mitigation and also in the front. This is an underground system in the back. There's an above-ground infiltration system in the front. We did, we've done initial testing a few years ago, two thousand seventeen. We, it was, we went down twelve feet. There was no groundwork, no pet rock.
No, we're not going to this specific.
The same. It was, it was great permeability. That's the point. We've. We've shown fire access throughout the site. This is overall the two sites and I'll go to one fifty-five next. Because this is just an overall, it shows there's adequate term rate I all throughout the site and both sites. So moving on to the one fifty-five Green Bush. There was one comment, by the way, from the fire inspector to check more of the term rate I at the south end there. On one twenty-five, that's not a problem. We can tweak that and we can work. On the one fifty-five site, it's, there is an existing parking lot, a piece of area that exists on the south end of the site. We're proposing to put a one hundred twenty-eight thousand square foot warehouse on the site. This one has one hundred fifty-two spaces provided. Again, it's a similar system where there's an underground system in the back underneath the parking lot for drainage generation. And there's the above-ground infiltration and water quality system in the front of the building. Drainage primarily flows from the east, from Plasmo Mountain and through the site. There's two, there's three actually locations where we studied discharge points. Primarily, there's one at the, roughly where the intersection of the fire access road is here in South Green Bush. And the other one's at the south end of the site where they run off from the wet man drizzle out to the south. I think that pretty much summarizes what we're looking to do here. We do have a full landscaping and lighting plan prepared for each project. And I know on the landscaping plan in particular, for the one fifty-five site, there's an extensive, they've got it oriented opposite way. There's an extensive screening, green giants along the, in this case, of the north side. And that's where the, there's an adjacent residential area over here, and there's also on the other side of the street from the south Green Bush. And there's an extensive screening along that detention basin as well. And similarly, the other site has a full landscaping plan as well.
And I do want to, excuse me, sorry. I do want to mention with respect to some of the comments that we've received, we are actually encouraged and hopeful that some of the preferences expect, express will will likely, in our opinion, reduce the impervious surface and allow us to to even improve the performance of the drainage system. And we have discussed with the PRC initially some discussion about parking, but we're really, we're, we're confident that we can address the site planning issues in any of the detail, as you said, Mr. Chairman, and the SWIP that, that, you know, we don't need to go through too much.
What I'm going to do with these questions is, I'll be here, a lot of questions, because these sites are adjacent to each other. What I'm going to do is read the comments for one twenty-five first, and I'm going to read the comments of one fifty-five secondly. We will vote on each project separately, they're not combined, they're separate projects. But in order to answer the questions properly by the board and questions the public have, we will read all the comments.
No, that's fine, great. Thank you. I I do want, one other thing I want to mention is just that I I don't believe, with with respect to seeker, just so we we do this in order whenever the board is comfortable acting. I'm not sure that there's ever been a declaration of lead agency status by this board.
There has not.
Okay, so, so again, obviously, before you conclude seeker, you'd have to start seeker, but I just want.
Yeah, I think you're jumping ahead a little bit.
No, I understand. I just, I just want to, on the record, what we're, what we're. Because a seeker review is one of the things that I need to check, that's all.
Okay. One twenty-five South Green Bush Road, also building zoning planning administration enforcement, letter dated March fourteen, twenty twenty-three. There are twelve comments. Department of Environmental Management Engineering, letter dated March six, twenty twenty-three. There are forty-eight comments. Brooklyn Engineering, March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. They state the proposed action demonstrated potential significant adverse impacts with respect to drainage, had to be mitigated and therefore recommend one twenty-five South Green Bush Road and one fifty-five South Green Bush Road. Site plan is being approved as rated subject to the vote project comments, which there are. Seven. Bureau of Fire Prevention, dated February seventh, twenty twenty-three. There are two comments. Rockland County Plan, letter dated February eighth, twenty twenty-three. There are there are thirty-four point three comments. Rockland County Center for Environmental Health, January thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. There are three comments. Rockland County Highway Department, February first, twenty twenty-three. There are five comments. Rockland County Drainage Agency, letter dated October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one. And we, this year, please note that the vote referenced site has been determined to be within the jurisdiction of the OCDA. And a stream control act permit from the OCDA is required for the current proposal. Alvin Gaddy, email dated January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. Close work may be impossible in existing gas service and have contact depth. I have a email from Lillian Gutierrez, Lucina, sorry if I messed up the last name, March twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three. She has six comments. Rockland County Department of Health, January thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Comments attached. Rockland County Planning Department, January twenty-third, twenty-three. Comments attached. Comments from the October twenty-seven, twenty twenty-one meeting, that were not written into the record. Also Building Zoning Planning Administration Enforcement, October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one.
Mr. Chairman, three, go ahead. PRC had comments, there's two comments. From October twenty, twenty-one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. October twenty, okay, one twenty-five South Green Bush Road, site plan, PRC had two comments. PRC recommends that all conditions be met prior to planning, final, board approval of site plans. The PRC recommends that the applicant should consider separating the properties and provide separate driveway, allowing the property to act independently. And for one fifty-five South Green Bush Road, PRC has two comments, saying, PRC recommends that all conditions be met prior to planning, final, board approval of site plans. PRC recommends the applicant should consider separating the properties and provide separate driveways, allowing the properties to act independently. Also Building Zoning Planning Administration Enforcement, October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, sixteen comments. Department of Environmental Management Engineering, October twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, they have thirty-five comments. Rockland County Planning, October nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, nineteen comments. Rockland Drainage Agency, letter dated October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one. Okay, site is to determine to be within the OCDA. Okay, a letter from Elizabeth Dudley of Kuphan dated March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. I have a full environmental assessment form. Dating October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. I have a letter from Lillian Penny Associates Landscape Architecture, October, September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two, for one twenty-five, one fifty-five South Green Bush Road. A letter from Delvello, Denellen, and Weingarten, Weiss, and Whitaker, Whitaker LLP. Letter dated January tenth, twenty twenty-three. I have a letter from one twenty-five South Green Bush LLC, letter dated December thirteen, twenty twenty-two, regarding lease extension modification for one twenty-five South Green Bush Road. I have collar engineering design, letter dated January sixth, twenty twenty-three. AKR rep. Dated October nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. I think that's.
Do you have the email that I gave you about back and forth?
First Peter's email?
Thank you. I have a email from Bruce Peters, uh, from March twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. And the meeting has given this email forty-eight responses and questions after A, B, C, D, and E. Is that everything now?
For one twenty-five.
Okay, that's one twenty-five. Now we need to commence for one fifty-five South Green Bush Road. South Green Bush Road site plan. PRC has no additional comments beyond the comments submitted by other agencies for the project. Also Building Zoning Planning Administration Enforcement, dated March fourteen, twenty twenty-three. They have seventeen comments. Also Department of Environmental Management Engineering, March sixth, twenty twenty-three, has
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight comments. Bureau of Fire Prevention, February seventh, twenty twenty-three, has two comments. Rockland County Plan, February eighth, twenty twenty-three, has
Thirty-two point three.
Thirty-two point three comments. We read in the Brooklyn Engineering Report earlier on one twenty-five. Rockland County Highway Department, five comments. Rockland County Center for Environmental Health, January thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, three comments. Alvin Gaddy, Wednesday, January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. Based on our maps, O-N-R does not have a service feeding location on one fifty-five. Please contact O-N-R. Rockland County, oh, January thirty-first, twenty-three, comments attached. Rockland County Planning Department, January twenty-third, twenty-three, comments attached. Comments from October twenty-seventh, planning will be eaten. We're not written, we're writing now. Again, one fifty-five South Green Bush Road, PRC recommends that all conditions be met prior to planning, final, planning board approval of site plans. PRC recommends that the applicant should consider separating the property, provide separate driveway, allowing the property to act independently. Also Building Zoning Planning Administration Enforcement, October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, seventeen comments. Department of Environmental Management Engineering, October twenty-second, twenty twenty-one.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six comments, thank you. Office Department of, Rockland County, letter dated October nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. And there are
Sixteen.
Sixteen comments. Rockland County Drainage Agency, proposed project is outside the jurisdiction of the RCBA. Okay, we have a full fundamental assessment form dated October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. Letter again from Delvello, Denellen, Weingarten, Weiss, and Whitaker LLP, dated January tenth, twenty twenty-three. We have a lease agreement from one twenty-five South Green Bush Road LLC for a lease extension modification to one fifty-five South Green Bush Road. Collar Engineering, January sixth, twenty twenty-three. Lillian Penny Associates, against September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two. I think that's, is that everything?
I would also reference Bruce Peters' email as well as Liz Dudley's email.
Okay.
Because they're, for both properties.
All right. Okay, we have a, a email from Bruce Peters, dated March twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. Comments A through E, and additional twenty. Comments A through E, additional twenty, forty-eight comments. On one twenty-five and on one fifty-five.
Those forty-eight comments are responses to.
Yeah, it's really an email exchange.
Okay, oh, between the two parties.
It's comments, they're his response, his comments in response to the email exchange.
And the last one is here, Elizabeth Dudley, March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. A letter to the board. Thank you. Let's hope it's up to you, Mr. Edwards.
You guys realize that there's another warehouse being proposed? That's gonna dump into the same intersection.
Yes, sorry, I understand.
I have a letter here that says that the session does not accommodate eighteen-wheelers turning into three oh three without endangering motors. Have you, have you been going about resolving that problem?
That comment is on the, is on that other project?
No. That's a question he's asking.
Right. Well, I mean, we would meet design criteria that were necessary in order to make the sites function a certain, and in conjunction with whatever that other project is, is doing to mitigate their issues. So, I mean, obviously it has to be able to accommodate the.
Aside from the other project, I just wanted you to be aware of.
Yes.
If you're aware of another facility thing.
Yes, thank you.
We're talking about yours now. So the trucks that are gonna come out of your facility, both facilities, how many trucks are we talking about per day?
Our traffic consultant provided a full analysis. Our traffic consultant provided a full analysis.
So you don't know?
Fortunately, he was not able to make it here tonight. He had a last-minute emergency, from what I understood. But he has his full analysis, does did all the truck calculations in conjunction with AKRF.
So. So you're not, you're not sure how many trucks it might have?
Well, I think it's on the record, we're just not able to say.
Yeah, I just wanted to know for the public, you know, knowledge, they don't have all these records. What road are they gonna come out of? And to where? You're not gonna be using Greenbush Road. From the site? To the, from the site, how are, how are the trucks gonna go out to three oh three?
Um. I think the, actually, I can't, I can't answer for the traffic, so. I know that we worked together on arranging the patterns on the site, but I think it's south, isn't it south?
Yeah, we, we basically, the last few times that we were here, we, we designed the site in a way that it's not possible for trucks to enter the site if they would come from Greenbush Road. And they will not be able to leave the site by going through Greenbush Road. They would have to make a left turn out of the site.
So GPS tells them to go through Greenbush Road? How do you know?
With the signage on the plan, you direct them to the appropriate direction for sure.
They won't be able to turn into the, into the site. Unless the GPS does tell them to go that way, they won't be able to turn into the site off of Greenbush Road.
Okay. So that's gonna create a traffic problem. When a truck can't turn somewhere, an eighteen-wheeler that's seventy-five feet long, that intersection is not gonna be accom, is not going to accommodate those trucks, especially when they make a mistake, or GPS tells them, there's a mistake. So, you know, truck's gonna find itself blocking traffic, trying to figure out what he's gonna do. So I'm just wondering, what, do you have anything in place other than signs that's gonna help these truckers leaving your facility, coming into your facility?
Well, I, I think, as with all applications, it's, it's difficult to design for people who don't comply with signage and circulation indications, and we will make sure that it's properly signed. As Jake has said, it's not, it's also not really a functional, I mean, the trucks will become familiar with the, with the site, so it's really not a functional way to access the site. So I, again, I don't know what to say about people who just don't, you know, violate those things, but.
So let me, can I answer one question first?
Sure.
So there, there is signage, as I indicated to you on the plan. There's also less radiative, available in the pavement itself as opposed to.
Are you, did that go through you?
This is South Greenbush Road.
South Greenbush Road, right.
Right, so they're discouraged from turning right to begin with because there's not any pavement turning right at the beginning. To the left is far greater. That's like in the state for now, we're gonna have a truck.
So when they come out of your facility, they reach three oh three. Which way are they gonna turn out of?
I believe it's to the south.
Yeah.
To the south.
Yes.
That way.
Yes.
Now. What if the truck needs to go? The truck's gonna have a hard time turning right going north onto three oh three.
Well, from, all I can say is from the site itself, I can't speak for the traffic here. From the site itself, we've, it's discouraged with just the amount of pavement that's even available to take a right.
I don't think they would tempt me.
Is that?
I don't think they would tempt us.
Right.
That, that's part of the design.
So let me ask you, have you, you haven't talked to New York State about three oh three making a wire or?
I, I know a traffic consultant has been aware of the DOT and the wiring and, you know, a bunch of stuff. He, he has mentioned it, and it is something that he is actively working on.
All right. So, all right, so we don't know how many trucks are gonna come in and out every day. What are the, what are the operating hours of the facilities?
Well, we, we would comply with, with your operating hours. I mean, you know, again, the same is true with respect to the, I just wanna say, it's not that we don't know, we cannot say right now, but it's on the record, which is available to the public, and, and we can make it more clear as far as the number of trucks, but we would comply with your, with your hours of operation.
So you don't know what the hours are?
Not, the current hours of operation are around from seven AM to six, six PM, I believe. That's what the current.
Is that twenty-four, is that seven days a week?
Seven days a week.
Seven days?
Yes, seven days a week. For the PDI.
If I can interject, I know you're a new attorney representing them, right? So, half this board is not familiar with this application.
I understand, sure.
So just to be sure, to say, you know, last time we presented that, it all has to be refreshed because half the members are not familiar. Number one, number two, these questions are coming up because, at least for the five and a half years I've been in this position, we do get complaints that trucking is happening at night on Greenbush Road, which is not permitted. So that's why these questions are rising, and that's why it's critical that these answers are presented to the board.
Right.
So I just want the applicants to understand that's why they're bringing up.
I, we certainly do understand, and, and of course, we'll, we'll provide any information that's requested, and again, as to enforcement issues, you know, we're happy to work with your enforcement agencies, I'm, I'm making it as clear as possible. But absolutely, we, our most recent submission also addressed these issues.
Seven AM to five PM.
Seven AM.
Yeah. And that's seven days a week, or six days, or five days?
There has been some changes in, in the tenancy over there. One tenant who's actually not open on the weekends is actually occupying seventy-five percent of that building right now. And that's the same tenant that would be, that wants to occupy the rest of the two face, two spaces, prime packaging, and they do not work on Saturdays or Sundays.
You, when you're going through your dissertation about the project, you mentioned parking spaces. One facility has four hundred and fifty-five parking spaces now.
Four sixty-eight.
Four sixty-eight. One twenty-five.
Yeah.
Thirteen hundred and eighty-four parking spaces. Where is that number come from?
I, I, I think the, the discussion with parking that we've been involved with, with AKRF, is, has to do with the fact that your, your code, as you probably know, has two ways of complying with the parking. One is, is quite low, and would require, I think, twenty-five parking spaces, which even we don't think is appropriate. And the other, the alternate is, is, would, would be higher, and what AKRF and our consultants agreed upon, and, and this is also in the record, is that a conservative estimate using ITE standards would be appropriate there. In further conversations with the PRC, and, and we hope with, with, continuing with, you know, your consultants, we frankly think, and, and we think AKRF will eventually support this, that there are many more parking spaces for, for typical vehicles than are, than are necessary for this. And, and we think, as I said, that, that that will result in actually less impervious surface, and potentially even the land bank and the parking, but, but the point is, the number comes from a, from a, sort of a maximum number of spaces that I don't even think, I, I don't even think the, the board would, would want, or, or members of the public, it's just, it's just unnecessary and way too much impervious surface, but, you know, we, we certainly are, we're looking forward to working with the board on that design.
So at these two facilities, is there, can we put the tractor trailers parked there?
Well, I don't know if.
Yeah, they'll be parked, only promoting and unloading. They won't be, you know, overnight parking, that's not something that we would be having there.
There'll be no standing.
Standing.
Yeah.
And the, I think the one building has buses in it now.
Yeah, those buses.
Is that your tenant?
Yeah, student, student bus, they're, they are tenants, and they will not be there anymore once we get, you know, if we get approval for this project. We do have a lease with them that we won't, we will never kick them out in the middle of the school year, so let's say we get an approval in, let's say, March, we wouldn't, it, it wouldn't terminate their lease, their lease continues until, so we have that in place with them. But the students, the buses will no longer be there on approval of this project.
I'll, that'll be it for now, until I hear from the public.
Just one more comment I want to make on, on the parking, I believe the way they are is either it's per employee count. There's two ways of looking at it, it's either first with a square footage calculation or per employee. We all know that, you know, warehouses like this, I can tell you right now, is, you know, the manager of this property, there is, let's say, twenty employees for the entire space. It, it doesn't require that much, so if you're doing for a square footage, you'll have an excessive amount of parking spaces that is no, is not really needed, and you would have, you know, a pointless amount of impervious surface covered. So that's why there's another way to look at it, which is for the employee count, which we did provide the employee count to our traffic consultant.
And I think that's why your code wisely allows for the two alternates, so that we don't have excess impervious surface when, when.
So, so on one fifty-five, that's gonna be the building, correct?
Correct.
How tall is that building gonna be?
About forty feet.
And why is it forty feet?
That, I believe that's like typical warehouse height.
That's not a good, that's not gonna become a, a, one of these box, yeah, Amazon.
No, we, this is way too small for an Amazon warehouse. They are not looking for something of this size.
More than Costco or BJ's?
No, we actually have a letter of intent and a lease prepared for, we know what kind of tenant wants to go in there. What they do, is prime packaging port, they just supply boxes. They, they have the boxes and wrapping, and they supply it to different companies. That's their primary function for these type of warehouses. The warehouses like, that you mentioned, in my experience, they require a lot more space, like Tesla factories, I mean, these are, these are buildings that, if you lay the Empire State Building flat, it takes up even more space than that. That's in all this application.
Just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'll wait for comments from the public. Does she have any?
So it's a little confusing because there's two separate projects here and everything is combined, so if I'm looking at just one twenty-five, you know, you wanna not, you wanna renovate the existing building, knock down a portion of it, and rebuild it, but you want us to look at both the projects together, not separately?
I, I do think, and I think your attorney and Ms. Slavin would agree, that they, they are separate sites and therefore would require separate review and approval. But yes, I mean, we are presenting them together and the, you know, the impacts do overlap us to kind of, you know.
And just to give the, the board, since it's a new board, a little background on it, one twenty-five South Greenbush has an existing warehouse, next to it there's office buildings. Those office buildings used to be occupied by PDI. PDI vacated around, I wanna say, two, three years ago. There is no demand for an office space like that anymore, and those days are over. So, we would like to, for one twenty-five, demolish those office buildings and continue on to the, continue the warehouse, make it one, you know, big warehouse, and then we, for one fifty-five, it's just vacant land, we wanna put up a warehouse over there, and now that we're going for approvals for both at the same time, they function very nicely together, we would like to design them together, however, we, we do, we understand that they're gonna be two separate applications.
Because it, you know, in terms of talking about traffic, truck traffic, the amount of trucks, you know, if you're kind of demolishing certain buildings that exist, it's gonna be different than if two of them together, so it's just a little confusing. I just, I wanted to specifically comment about the wetlands. I know you had Williams County Associates found that there could be some temporary disturbance to the wetland, to the wetlands, with the permanent adverse impacts to the wetlands. You know, definitely gonna need to see approval from the D E C and R C in there in terms of any kind of adverse impact on the wetlands that are there.
I don't, I don't think that, understood, and, and I think they are ACOE regulated, but I, I don't believe they're D E C wetlands, but whatever.
Would need a letter from D E C to say that, but we'd need to see that.
Sure.
You know, I know that there were some comments brought up about the snow storage being too close to the wetlands as well, and the amount of salt and chemicals from the plowing that might also go in there, into the water, so we'd need to see that.
And again, just to that point, some, some of the changes recommended as part of the site plan reviewed by various consultants and that were written to the record by Ms. Mandel, we think will actually improve that situation as well, the additional, it will provide additional area for the snow storage.
Can you go back to the picture that you had with the, you were showing the plan, you were screening the trees on the north side of the building?
For the one fifty-five site?
Yeah, yeah. So the trees on the north side, the screening, yes.
Yep.
What's the distance from there to the property line, the residential property?
It's closer than forty. At as close as forty, it's about a hundred feet to the buffer line, to the buffer, the tree buffer, about a hundred feet from close to forty. There's someone in the tree.
And the generator, the, of, in terms of noise?
I would like Jake to answer that one.
I don't think so, I mean, we can look into it further, but typically with warehouses like this, there's no AC, we just have Resner four-steer heaters inside and fans, there's typically no rooftop equipment on top of our warehouses.
Would we need clarification on that, for sure?
I mean.
Sure.
How about generators?
No. We, I mean, unless we have, unless we have a tenant that specifically wants it, then I'm assuming you would have to come back to this board, we wouldn't make that tenant go for approval of the air.
For a modification.
For a modification. We wouldn't take that responsibility on.
You know, truck traffic is a big issue, it's always an issue, especially on Greenbush Road and three oh three, right at corner, and the extension of, of Matthews, so we'd need to have the traffic consultant come back and, and explain the traffic study to us.
He'll be at the next meeting, I'll answer enough of that here.
Yeah, I don't have any other questions.
Thank you.
And I, and I do want to mention on the, on the truck traffic. But you're, part of the mitigation here for that is, is mitigation by design. In other words, it's not just signage. This is not like the trucks will come in, find themselves stuck with nowhere to go and create that traffic jam. Because there is a designed way for them to make an appropriate turn, they will find, as I said, that by design, they, they, they can't negotiate that turn. And, and so I, I, I think, but obviously we will clarify that and make sure that it's part of the problem.
But the thing I'm worried about is them going out. Green for sure.
Uh, that's, yeah.
That's the state.
That's all registered.
Resident.
Correct.
And your comments about the D E Cs, we're talking about swap the creek. To reach your, your consultant.
Anything else?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Flory.
Oh, thank you. Um, last, last time you guys were here, you heard all the comments from the consultants, the board, the public. Uh, you guys are back and there's still a lot of outstanding concerns, you know. Forty-eight comments from engineering, thirty-two from planning. Uh, and so not much has changed in this plan, right? Even after all those comments, it still seems like pretty much the same plan?
I, I don't think so, actually. And I don't know what they changed or Steve wanted.
The, the, yeah, the size is, is the same, but what we, what we took away from this and what took a lot of time was the SWIFT. The SWIFT, uh, I don't know if you saw them, they're binders. And that was what took up a considerable amount of time, as well as hiring the wetlands consultant, doing our, you know, a bunch of different things that we had to do. So while the site looks the same on paper, there was a lot of stuff that we did behind the scenes in order to, to tackle the major issues that, you know, this board had at our, at the last meeting and the consultants. Most of these items that we see in the comments are things we, are, we could address, we can address, but we want to address them as, after we, you know, assemble them in the order that we received. Because if we start addressing them now, what's going to happen is we address all these comments and then we get some more comments and then we're kind of working our way backwards. We want to assemble everything properly, get everyone's comments together and address them.
Yeah, that makes sense.
You know, forty-eight comments here, were they?
Years of years of comments?
Uh, a lot of them are based upon the information we did submit to SWIFT. So we merely, uh, we've submitted to SWIFT, he's had his war comments and, you know. A lot of them are technical and the, I, I don't think any of them are any problem to really address, with exception of one town, he's agreed to take off as far as drainage at, at one forty-five. I think, like the intersection itself, which is too low. They agreed. Everything else is all technical and shouldn't be a big.
He has concerns about the approach on the wetlands, with the snow area.
Yeah.
He talks about, even storage is unacceptable where it's placed uphill.
Yeah, we're going to revise all the stor, storage.
It's all, it's all.
Yes.
environmental concerns.
Right.
Uh, and one of the things we still have is the, the truck traffic concerns.
Right.
You know? Um, and we've seen a lot about the intersection because of, of your plans and then the plans for the, uh, the other, you know, warehouse. So we've been looking at the intersection and we realize, anybody who lives in this town realizes how bad that intersection is. You know, and it's, it's, and when you look at the, all your truck traffic is going out on three oh two, right? It's, you've already made, it's all going out there. It's, it's just adding to further truck traffic in here. And, oh, twenty years ago, the whole town was concerned about it. They made three oh three overlay and there's a three oh three corridor. Well, technically you're not in it. All your trucks are going out of three oh three as if you were sitting right in it. So the, the, the impact is the same, you know? Your truck traffic on three oh three is the same as if it was right on three oh three. And that, that's why they came up with the overlay, you know, and the, about safety, uh, you know, the environment, the pollution. So there is still concerns about that truck traffic. And if you look at your last traffic study, it was twenty nineteen. It hasn't been one since.
I think he's been going back and updating, it, it has been since two thousand and nineteen.
Did this board get anything?
Since then, I don't think so.
Uh, we actually go to a while, we actually go to a while ago to have a new, uh, track study done. And then because of, because of COVID, you didn't do that. And so the, the, the new warehouse across the street, we actually got an independent traffic study in the kind of match that they did, in particular. And I think that'd be a good idea in this case too, because you got a twenty nineteen, pretty much old before Amazon moved in, before even looking at the W P T, I mean, the other one, the other warehouse, right? So I think that'd be a good idea to get the, the, a new traffic study or we have an independent traffic study, look at plans and the total impact between that warehouse, Amazon moving in already, and, and, and your, your double warehouse. Oh, but even by your own admission with the twenty nineteen traffic study, uh, our consultants, AKRF, has summarized that it'll generate approximately thirty-three trucks in each of the A M and peak periods, so at least sixty-six during those peak periods. And then that doesn't even count anything in between. Uh, because if you look at your long environmental form, you're saying trucks are going to come in randomly between seven and five. So you have those peak sixty-six trucks and then you're saying they're just going to come in randomly all day anyway. So that's sixty-six plus coming in, hitting that intersection that's already at a, you know, level of service D. If you look at the traffic study, it's, it's, it's terrible. It's going to make it worse, obviously. Um, and then if, and even if you look at page seven of your long environmental form, you, you admit that proposed action will result in substantial increase in traffic. You, you checked yes to that.
Sure.
You know, so it's just common sense.
Right.
This is going to have a substantial increase in traffic. And that's just not you, uh, the lead from the Department of Transportation, dated March, uh, sorry, September seventeenth, looking at your traffic study. And they, they even say, based upon information provided of substantial increase in the use of route three oh three, mountain. So everybody's in agreement that this project is going to make traffic there worse. You know, and that, that means it's safety issues, environmental issues. And, you know, we have people getting to work, kids getting to school, the, the university on the other side. So it's just, this is just a, going to be a terrible intersection. And the concerns are still there with us and the public. And I don't know how you can change that by talking about drainage. You know, I understand that drainage might be changing, but the overall impact for this on the truck traffic, I, I don't think, I don't see how that could be changed without scaling back the project.
Well, I, so, so a couple of things here, and thank you, we appreciate the comment. The, the, first of all, by, by maintaining the two sites and, and, and sizing the, the proposed warehouses um, in accordance with the size of the two sites, we, we prevent, i- i- and, and rather than combining them, for instance, we prevent, as Jake said, really being able to market them to a substantially larger warehouse facility that, that would have greater impacts. Also, while it will increase traffic, um, you know, it is a, a state road and, and I'm not sure that that means that it will, that the level of service would, would change. As you said, it, it's not a great intersection. And, and, but the level of service with respect to how it's analyzed by traffic engineers. We certainly understand that, that you would want updated information on, you know, on current conditions. So again, we appreciate the comment, we're, we will adjust them. And a- as Jake and I said, we just wanted to have all the comments before we, you know, invested in, in further, any, any further revision or, or further studies.
Oh, I just, uh, one more additional comment. There's so much, so much here, I'm just going to limit myself.
Sure.
The traffic issue, truck traffic issue is really big. Uh, and then on your environmental form, you can mention the comprehensive plan. That is a site part of a, uh, does the comprehensive plan include recommendations for the site? For the proposed activity location, you said yes. That makes sense. So the town is in the process of updating the comprehensive plan. So, but in the, the draft plan here, it talks about, especially with this area protecting wetlands. You know, so suggests a five hundred feet buffer, you know, wetlands, park hill creek. So, so, so these are in the works, just protecting. And you're, you're approaching it on the wetlands right there, you know, the, the people, the animals, pretty much hitting right next to the wetlands. Um, they also talk about updating sections to decide what warehouses can be used. There was an argument between retail and old school warehouse, I guess, I don't know. So that's in the works too, you know, so there's a lot going on and people are concerned about this. And in the survey, uh, they took a survey and fifty-five percent of the people said, do you believe the quality life in the town of Orange Town has declined? And fifty-five percent of our town people said it has declined. No, so that's how the people feel out there. And point number four of their top four reasons is an increase in through traffic, especially truck traffic. So there's that truck traffic again, that's, that's getting to people. And then they also had, they, they polled all the town workers, town officials serving the body. And even, everybody admitted that, do you have any concerns about current development? And the top two points, well, two out of three is large traffic developments near residential area, which is like this, especially along the route three oh three corridor, which is this, and then a large number of warehouses. So this is something that's everybody's concerned about. And it's, it's actually come through in the comprehensive plan that they're addressing these issues with the town.
Right.
And people. So you understand why the, the scrutiny is there, because this is, over twenty years, people have been concerned about this area. So you're, you're adding to the demise of this area, you know, for lack of a better word. It's like it's, it's, this, this plan is not going to make it better. And we have to do something to make, make this better for the town.
So again, appreciate the comment. The, 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 the pending and potentially adopted comprehensive plan is, as you all know, a, a forward-looking document and rightly, and, and even if it were adopted, it would have, you know, zoning changes would have to be made in accordance with it as you go forward to, to incorporate some of those thoughts. We have designed the site in compliance with, with, with present zoning and, and, and we understand the concerns and, and we have done what, what we can, as I said, by, by doing them as two different sites, uh, it, it limits the size of the warehouse and therefore the kind of tenant that can occupy it. This is, by warehouse standards, a, a, a low density use and, and it is, it is in, you know, it's on a state road and, and property zone. But we, we, we have not been, we, we understand the concern about traffic and, and we'll do what we can in terms of design to help mitigate that. And, you know, so again, we're happy to be here getting the comments from both people in the public and we'll, we'll, we'll do what we can.
Is that, even if it's not part of the comprehensive plan, it's the feel of the town.
Yeah.
And, and that's kind of what we, that's kind of like what.
I understand.
Part of the review is, as you said in chapter twenty-one A, to ensure that the health, safety, welfare, comfort and convenience of the public is fully considered. So that's part of the consideration.
Sure.
Your effect on, on field, the neighbors and the town. That, that's, that's all I got. Thank you.
Slavin.
All right, it's like I had, I don't.
Turn of the face?
Yeah, no, no, this is very comprehensive, your presentation. So, okay, we're, we're concerned all about the same thing.
Sure.
Wetlands, the traffic, noise, all this impact. A bunch of trucks today, they need to cooperate and make a right on three oh three. And they have to go in past the W L line to make that turn. So we're concerned about having eighteen-wheelers exit this facility on the three oh three. If they don't, if they're going to be forced to go south on three oh three, I don't know where they're heading in that direction. If that's, if that's what you're, yeah, if that's what the, the plan is going to be. So I don't know that traffic study for this particular project, but again, just don't want to reiterate what was already very, very, very concerned.
Would clarify.
All right, the first traffic study was done using, you spoke of one fifty, right?
No, it's only one fifty six.
Okay.
One fifty.
Uh, like you said, plenty of comments here. I don't really have any additions.
I guess my only comment would be that to ensure when a traffic study is done, and I know your, your traffic advisors aren't here, is that it is taking into account both sides of this intersection. And I know that's not on you, but as the board, I think, we need to look at this as a whole because if two traffic studies are done independently, separately, without taking into consideration both warehouses impacting the same neighborhood at the same time, it's not an accurate representation of what this road will look like in five years. So I, I think that's incumbent on us in an independent traffic study to make sure that that is inclusive, both warehouses being in that, in that area. Um, and then I guess I think about it from a, obviously environmental, but then if I'm looking at it from a, I'm hiking those trails behind, you know, this, this warehouse and I'm looking out at the view across, I always notice these huge warehouses, these big bright white warehouses. And I know there's been a couple of comments in a few of these documents, and I'm not going to quote them now, but talking about how can we make this a more environmentally friendly building? And like talking about solar panels, green roofs. I mean, are there ways to kind of make it so it's not such an eyesore on the mount, from the mountain behind it? Are there ways to look at maybe making it a greener facility so we're not causing it to be a, an eyesore, a traffic problem and an environmental issue? Like, are there ways we can mitigate some aspects of this in, in the planning moving forward?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have a few questions to you. Uh, just first, uh, point twenty-five and one fifty-five. The two parcels rely on each other. What is the reason for it? Since the building department, D E M E and Rockland County planning has asked that each site be designed independently. Prime mentions of this at meetings of ten, twenty-seven, twenty-one, building department number two. D E M E, ten, twenty-seven, twenty-one, number three, separate drainage. Rockland County planning, three, twenty-seven, twenty-one, number twelve, two sites. So you're, you're still combining the sites, yet everybody else wants them. And so this is one that asks that be designed separately and separately.
So we're, we're not combining the sites. They're, what would be required in order for this, for our proposed drainage to work properly?
Make the drainage everything close along with.
Yeah, but all, all that would be required, because they are commonly owned, there would need to be cross easements between these sites to accommodate the infrastructure design. And, and that is, as I suspect you know, not an uncommon thing. And because it would be in the deed, in, in the chain of title for both sites, even if they were thereafter sold. Um, and of course, we would work with your, your council to make sure that those cross easements were solid and accommodated everything. And I do want to note that Rockland County, um, they, they do talk about, um, they, they make a recommendation that they, that they be designed, I want to look at that, I actually have that note in front of me. We are concerned in conjunction with, since they are two separate parcels, they should be designed independently and not rely on each other. But then further in that paragraph, it says, if they are kept secret, separate, a cross easement could still be provided, but parking trucks and circulation should remain independent of each other as there is no guarantee that two parcels will remain in same ownership. So, so the cross easement concept is, is in Rockland County's comments as well. And I, um, so, and I don't know whether there are particular design elements that make it.
It reduces the amount of impervious, unsafe, because you can use the same roof for the same thing.
So it has benefits to the environmental impacts to do that. So we understand the concern, we have not ignored it. We, we, we think it can be addressed in, in our response again, once we collect all these answers.
Right, but I'm sorry, did I miss something? I don't actually think you answered the question. Why was it done this way?
Because.
Why can't they be designed independently?
Because the two compliant buildings that would result from this, best practice would be that, that the drainage system be designed as it is. And because, as Steve said, it reduces impervious, um, surface and it makes for a better drainage plan.
Instead of dual roads.
But you're saying, but you're saying they're compliant, that they're only compliant because you have proposed the easements.
Right.
If you eliminated the eas, the need for the easements, then it wouldn't be compliant.
But what would the legal, what would be the premise for suggesting that the easements don't resolve a problem? That, that, that's what I don't think is ever.
But I still don't think you're answering the question though.
No, I, I think we did.
That's terribly proposed, that, that's a burden.
We answered the question.
I don't think so.
I mean, we told you why we designed it the way we did.
Well, that's, you just told me about your, you keep bringing back to the drainage issue. There are more issues than the drains there.
You're talking about circulation.
Circulation, and if you separate the two properties, and this has been asked since, I guess, maybe it was twenty nineteen, was first asked, that the two properties be separately designed, separately designed.
Right.
And it's been totally ignored. We have not, by, by this, you know, your prior, the people that have been here before us, they keep going over and over the same things. And it's been asked by the building department, D E, for two distinct, separate things. And even when you talk about the, the SWIFT plan, the SWIFT plan, as, as Mr. Peters has brought up, is not designed properly. It's not in the order that it's supposed to be. It crosses, it's, it's not clear and distinct. If you read his comments, that's why he has only comments. It's not clear. His, his SWIFT is actually designed separately for each of the two properties.
Well, your, your, I, I know you're talking about more than drains, but I just want to address, your, your drainage consultant has, has put in their letters, I think, three times now, that, that the, um, that the approach taken is appropriate gas. And, and I understand.
D E M E, which is the engineer there, that is the primary engineer for this town.
Right.
And that's what Mr. Peters reported and that's what we follow. Some of the, some of the confusion was, I think, when the printer had printed it, there was sections of the report that were put in the wrong place.
there was sections of the report that were put in the wrong place. I told him in my response email that it's in the record, that I would hand deliver tabs, numbered pages, everything properly so that he's not confused. That was part of the comment to what you just referred to.
Number two, the, um, the two roads coming out to Green Bush.
One of the reasons was traffic, our traffic consultant advised us that the county prefers one entry out for the trucks, because if you have two entries out, there's mass confusion.
In that close proximity.
In that close proximity. So that's another good reason, besides reducing the amount of impervious coverage that's necessary, it's also that that two entryways out at the same, or in the same proximity, especially when you have trucks coming in and out, so.
We think it would exacerbate some of the concerns that that you have, um, I mean, there always has to be a balancing. We understand that the comments are made, we have to balance the comments, frankly, with with respect to your traffic concerns as well. So we we can, we will work, continue to work with AKRF and and your other consultants to to see if we can get, you know, sort of buy in on that concept, but it, at the moment, the answer to the question is that we we think it's it's just a preferable design with fewer environmental impact.
Can one project be approved and built independently the other? Or would you have to redo your site plan for that one side?
They could be built independently as long as they had the appropriate easements in place for anything that had to cross property lines. So if we built one instead of the other, and it needed to rely on, you know, easements over the other, we'd have to do that too. We're just doing it at the same time, which, again, I think, actually assists in the situation, because you'll have an opportunity to review the entire plan.
I don't think you read my question, but we'll go on, but see, like, building department number five, snow storage areas. Yeah, in those plans, there's more conflict in those plans between landscaping, where the wall is gonna go, where the snow is gonna go, where sidewalks are gonna go. Rockland County brought this problem back in twenty one, ten twenty seven, twenty one, and that problem was not corrected. Okay, at the meeting of ten twenty seven, twenty one, Rockland County planning number fifteen, they asked if we had a written agreement showing the new location for the buses. The current letter dated two eight twenty three, number twenty three, asked the same question, what's the current status? I know you said, you said that before, they will not leave until the end of the school year. Where are they going?
They have to find their own place. Their own, their own new spot.
Well, we wanna know where they're going, so they have a spot, so we don't wind up happily staying there when the, with the approval.
They won't be staying there for the approval, we won't approve the lease.
Oh, we wanna approve the the permit.
Right.
That's what we wanna know ahead of time.
You won't have to.
So we'd like to know if, when, and if this this project is is approved, we wanna have a, but I'm not saying where they are going.
That's fine.
Well, we can, right, and we can, we can certainly provide, um, verification that they will not be renewed there. I don't think we can promise that, that where they go, but we certainly can ensure for this board that they will not be on our property, and we'll provide proof to that effect when we get to that point.
You get with D E M E with the stuff, you know, that, uh, letter dated three six twenty three, they want to ask for the same. Why is, and you haven't, hasn't been compliant with, it wants the two separate ones, and you said it's being corrected, but it has to be corrected for me to review it.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we'll do that.
But so, none of the, uh, concerns listed in his letter change the, uh, the the environmental impact. All these systems on site have been designed properly, with water quality, runoff reduction, the whole works. What he's looking for are technical details in some of these things. He just wants more clarification and he, you know, and it's not a problem.
And we're happy to do that, we'll do that.
Account, uh, uh, accommodate, we can accommodate almost everything he's asking for, not a problem. It's just that all these concerns, and it looks like a lot, but it's not gonna change the design whatsoever. Some of the stuff, some of the retesting, uh, not a problem, we can do that. We did initial testing, here are the results, twelve feet down and no ground or no bedrock. I'm just saying, this is not gonna change when they do testing again.
Was it done in spring?
It was done in the fall, just as he asked.
It was, uh, D E M E notified that they have somebody, they weren't notified about it?
When I talked to Bruce, he said, when you get ready to do the real testing, call me. We'll have no problem doing that, but this is one of the cookies, we'll comply, they have the same results.
They're not there, then, well, it may produce the same results, it may not. But until they're there, when you do the perk test in the door, it's.
We understand.
And the perk tests are great, by the way, five-minute or less perk, almost everywhere, that's great.
Okay, Rockland County, your plan, letter dated two eight twenty three, has two, three, five. This question concerns about the stormwater runoff into Spark Hill Creek, which I think your your salt says it will run through the wetlands into the creek. What measures should be taken to show the runoff does not contain pollutants such as oil? Uh, you know, with that water flowing into the creek and wetlands from that site, does it either pass through the ponds or subject any water quality treatment? What is exactly going on there?
Absolutely, there's, first off, there's the primary, uh, pretreatment we provide. We provide environmental hoods for every single catchment on site, these are like mini oil separators. Then, it has to go through a pretreatment water quality system, whether it be four bay or underground structure. Then, after that, you know, some of these underground systems, by the way, have filters, as opposed to the four bays, which are just cleaned up periodically. And then it goes into the detention system, and most of it infiltrates, because we have a five-minute or less perk. So there's not gonna be, I understand the concern, but we've got pre-treated twice or three times over before we even get to the system.
What about the snowmelt, where's that coming?
There's snowmelt piles all over the place, so one of the the D E M concerns was the snow pile right in front of the four bay. Not a problem, we can get rid of it, we don't need it, we have plenty of air for snow, snowmelt.
And we've designed it conservatively.
And as far as the next to the wetland, we can remove that too, it doesn't need to be there. So we can revise the snowmelt piles, I mean, it all goes through the system anyway, and it gets pretreatment several times over before it moves into the system.
The new warehouse would be consisting one, uh, total of four hundred and fifteen thousand square feet, that's lot number one, two, one twenty five, right? Height would be forty feet. Letter, the letter dated from, uh, letter from DeBello and Albing, one ten twenty three states prime packaging. The current tenant will lease the entire warehouses per twelve thirteen twenty two lease extension and modification letter of the tent from one twenty five, uh, South Green Bush LLC. Yet, the one ten twenty three letter also talks about small companies of storing materials. What's the reason for the forty-foot height, it's not a high-capacity cube warehouse? And who exactly will be using one twenty five? You said prime packaging, but then in the letter states, uh, small companies will be storing materials there, or, uh, what is the exact, uh, uh, status of it?
I can answer that, um, I I don't think prime packaging is considered a large company. Um, they're not like FedEx, they're, they're considered smaller on the warehouse scale, so that's what we mean by that. Uh, they are the ones that would be occupying the space, they have expressed interest, they already occupy seventy-five percent of it. This elevator used to be on on the site, Gusky used to be, they both moved out, prime packaging took over their spaces.
Okay, and also, in that same, uh, letter, the tent says, uh, landlord to complete, complete the build-out of one forty seven, uh, of the hundred and forty-seven thousand square feet, where are they gonna be building out?
Uh, that just means that, um, it's part of the lease agreement, is that we do the build-out for them as they need it, such as if they need an office space in there, we we build it out for them, that's just part of their lease agreement. If they sign a twenty-year lease, we do the build-out, that's just normal lease language.
We could have to come back if they, when we do any, uh, area.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely, yeah, that would just be, you know, need a permit.
Okay, page five, the Colley's letter dated nine one twenty one responds to me, they are, that's comments. Said, based on review of accident data, several measures have been identified that could improve the overall safety under existing and future conditions. These measures include the installation of backplates at the Rio State, three oh three Mountain D O T intersection, additional signage, uh, shipping, and site distance improvements. Have you been in contact with Rio State D O T regarding these improvements?
I know my, um, traffic consultant has been, and he has brought it up to me in terms of improvements with the D O T, and we are in discussions with him about that.
Discussions, but nothing yet as far as the results?
No, we we would have to, again, we anticipated having to make certain modifications, and so, yes, we're aware.
Of D O T, and we are willing to work, we are willing to work with D O T if they have any.
You're talking about comments back, you know, September twenty one by Colley, who did your, uh, did your traffic study attack?
Right.
Okay, is there any current easements, uh, cross easements right now between one twenty five and one fifty five?
Not to my knowledge. One fifty five is what's, I'm not sure what cross easements we would have.
Well, I know, there, that's why I'm asking the question.
No, I, I, not to my knowledge.
Okay, would you?
We can confirm that.
We can confirm.
Okay. Okay, uh, and you said before, the heat's gonna, the heating system will be forced there, cooling will be fans?
Yeah, we don't typically provide air conditioning in our residential spaces.
Okay, yeah, the heating units are ground level in the building, outside the building?
They're inside the building, they're hung, they're resonator heaters, they're like boxes.
Right.
And you put them throughout the, they hang from, you have to have three foot clearance on every side for fire.
And they feel tight for, uh?
Natural gas.
Any backup generators for the facility?
No, if the tenant requires it, we, they will have to get their own approvals, and they'll be back in front of the board. We will not be providing it.
I have one question. One last thing, excuse me, Andy, I'm sorry. One last thing, uh, when you pour, when, we're filling both of, was one twenty five, one fifty five on the the new section. Is the concrete pour gonna be one solid pour, done one time, is it gonna be a single pour?
I think, uh, it's gonna be pretty tough to do something that size on a single pour, but that would be up to my contractor when the time comes.
Well, no, I'd like to know if it's gonna be a simple pour or not.
Okay.
And what's the?
Yeah, they, Mr. Mendel, they want people to do it.
I doubt it, it's too much, yeah, I don't, I don't think so.
Just wanna ask, okay. The mechanisms?
Yeah, are the, uh, how many loading bays are there that need these blowouts?
Yeah, we actually have, listen, um, thirty one fifty five, there's fourteen spaces required, seven parking spaces, and eighteen loading docks.
Are those loading docks gonna be all enclosed?
No. And for the one twenty five, we have forty six required, forty nine spaces provided, thirty one loading docks. So eighty, eighty spaces provided total, actually. Forty nine parking spaces and thirty one loading docks. They all backed up to the building and loaded and get out.
It'll be able to pass the air in or something like that?
Looks like around fifteen.
Fifteen, yeah.
Actually, it's two sides, there's eight, uh. We'll have to give you the exact number, but it looks like, well, one side's got around fifteen, the other side's got at least, uh, ten or twelve. So we'll get to the exact numbers in an hour.
There's one question, the twenty five, uh, page thirteen, D E F, uh, you say, is it, are the logical, are the logical sites have been found? You answered, uh, yes on the E F A F, uh, exactly, what about the, the logical, are the logical sites?
Great question, that answer comes right from the state, they just flag any of the the sites that come up, and they give a list with their, their pronouns, so whatever they said.
With, uh, the map up?
Yeah, it just comes out automatically, you can't choose it. Same thing with, uh, you know, other things like wetlands or whatever flagged, whatever comes up. Dangerous species, any of that stuff, just automatically comes up.
Make sure if there's any empirical plans or anything back there, or behind the, back of one fifty five.
We had a, we had a survey done, and there was, nothing came back, this was Don Brother, first.
Yeah, Jake Greenwell actually did provide that when they originally came in, the one fifty five, uh, I think the subdivision, or was it?
I know, and very, I can track down that document.
We can, we can resubmit.
We can resubmit it, but we do have it.
We were waiting for that, we haven't got a response on that one, so, if we did, if us got lost.
Yeah, I can, I can resubmit that, it's okay, I'm just gonna write down on my phone, so.
Okay. Uh, anyone, or have any further questions? Okay, that motion, open the portion, Mr. Florrie, second, Miss Lannan, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right, who can come up and speak? Name, address, you have exactly three minutes, uh, do not overstay, because that time. Uh, if you wanna say something, but the person in front of you made two comments, you agree with them? Just please say you agree with them, and if you wanna, and the other one do so, this way everybody gets a chance to say eventually go home tonight. I'll say, it doesn't matter to me, if I have a line, you wanna go home tonight. Okay, so please, uh, come on up and state your name, guys.
What's your name, sir?
Michael O'Car.
Spell your last name for me, Mike.
A M O O N.
Is it on?
It's on.
It was on, it clips up.
It was on.
It just kind of on it, maybe.
I I can be loud enough, that's just not an issue.
You're still spelling your last name.
Yes, ma'am, A M O O N C L A R K. I live on four oh eight Green Bush Road, your trucks are gonna drive through my yard, definitely, when they go over the mountain, which they shouldn't, um, just watched you guys beat the hell out of daddy wants to give us cell phone service. Sir, and this, these people are getting airtime, like, I don't understand that. Uh, you guys are landlords, you're parasites.
Sir, if you wanna make, if you're gonna consult people, I please ask you to sit back there. We're trying to be professional here, we're asking everybody to be courteous to everybody else.
I apologize. I'm curious about the benefit to the community, uh, the, your tenants, do they pay a living wage to even afford a house in this area? Do the workers actually come from here? Will these jobs that are being created, when they expand, will that benefit our town, our area? What's, what's the benefit to us? Obviously, you guys are gonna pull in some profits, that's to be expected. But but what does our town get? I don't see that. Uh, they're making boxes, the way things go, they're probably not pulling in that great of a wage. Houses here are expensive, um, it it just doesn't seem justified. For all the harms, all all the obvious harms, there's just nothing to make up for it.
Thank you. Next person.
Don't be bad, please, come on up. Your name, sir?
Vincent Lupi.
Wait, okay, spell your last name.
L U P I.
And your address, sir?
One zero six Spruce Street, L O L.
Uh, you said Spruce?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
So I think the board should consider our current problems before they approve anything that's gonna impact those current problems. There is current problems in that area, flooding, traffic, which have been mentioned, pollution. We have air pollution from from some of the other companies in the area. There's traffic problems from some of the other companies in the area, other proposed warehouse situation, as you know. Um, currently, from their location, the trucks are going up on sidewalks, the road is too narrow for traffic trailers to be human with. So to add more trucks and a completely other warehouse, which is more impervious, uh, surfaces, and Spark Hill Creek is currently flooding, it goes through my property, floods regularly, and that's only gonna get worse. Um, children walk on that street regularly, it's not safe. I literally see on a regular basis the trucks going up on the sidewalk to make the turn. They make a left, they can't, and if they go in, they're they're making a right into the facility, they go into the left lane, into oncoming traffic to make that turn, so that's a problem as well. Um, just gonna look at my phone, set a few notes. The hours, I walk down that street all the time, the trucks currently go in and out of there throughout the evening, way past dark. Again, people walking at night, and it's, it's unsafe, because they're not staying in their lane. Um, while the comprehensive plan is not yet approved, the overlay is approved. That's been in place for a long time, it was put there for a reason, to avoid situations like what's currently going on already, and this is only gonna make the situation worse. So I think the board should do the right thing for what the residents have said. and this is only gonna make the situation worse, so, I think the board should do the right thing for what the residents have said in, in, propose, the proposed, um, comprehensive plan, and not prove anything, not give any variances that's gonna prove anything, that's gonna impact the residents and the other businesses in the area, thank you.
And we don't think any of this is. This guy's the guy, you know, two parents is here, that's the Sony board, okay, we have.
Understood.
Okay.
Um, Liz Dudley.
What's your address?
Um, two fifty South Green Bush Road. I want to point out that the intersection is rated by the state as a D, and that is the lowest rating that they can give. I live on the block on Green Bush, and we have suffered from truck traffic with the current tenants. Thankfully, they were receptive to our request to help mitigate, but whoever knows, you know, who's in there, how they will deal with these situations. We still get trucks coming, um, on South Green Bush and over, over Cosmo Mountain Road and from Spruce Street, so even though a truck turning out to go right, it doesn't take into consideration all the trucks coming in and from every direction. I would also like to point out that there is another warehouse across the street, so in total, they wanna add ninety-six loading docks. That is madness. I think both projects simply cannot move forward with the way the intersection is designed now. That is not our town, that is New York State, and that's where you should be going to talk to about getting that fixed. That, that is, I sit there every day, and I don't use Spruce Street because it's super dangerous to go out, uh, across four lanes of traffic. I would also like to request an automated ticketing system for the truck traffic, the overweight truck traffic using our roads illegally. Um, best locations would be on Cosmo Mountain Road, to South Green Bush Road, and Spruce Street, and speaking to the O P D, the technology is here. We need a way to manage traffic without tasking our police department. There is no amount of taxes that they're paying to make sure that a, a police officer can sit there every day and monitor this. We also pay taxes, and I did a quick calculation based, there's sixty houses surrounding that area, and if you average fifteen thousand in taxes, which I know most of the houses close by are more close to twenty or twenty-five, that's one point two million dollars in tax money, I don't think they're paying one point two million dollars in taxes, so, I hope our, um, you know, input is taken in consideration. Until the comprehensive plan is completed, there should be a moratorium on all warehouse projects, you know, um, I think it's the only thing, only way we can, you know, fix this problem, thank you.
Next? Next. What's your name, sir?
Eric Bosley.
Wait, spell your last name for me.
B O S L U Y.
And your address, sir?
Seven Sugar Hill Road, uh, in Miami, but I used to live at two twenty South Green Bush Road, it's still one and rented, it's directly bought in.
Ooh, you're giving me a lot of land.
Property.
I'm good, I'm good with the sugar.
So, am I not to ask, like, I thought they needed a variance for side yard parking, isn't that the case? And, I don't know if those proposed even, but I think they're gonna have to get that at this facility.
That would be something that will be for the Z B A for what?
Because if they did separate the two developments, and two separate developments, like it should be, without the variance, because there's no hardship, it would shrink the size of the buildings, which would limit the, the non-loading bays and storage and trucking, and I'm mostly concerned with trucking, uh, and how that affects property values to the whole car. The only track study that was done was done by the developer, by Mazer, and it did use like code one fifty, which is long-term warehousing, and it said that there would be a hundred and nineteen additional vehicles during peak morning rush hour. It did say that most of those would be cars, but it doesn't make any sense, so we opted to have that reviewed by A K R F last time, and they actually recommended that it would be redone with code one fifty-six, which is a high cube parcel hub. Because the developer said at the first meeting, they needed the forty-foot ceilings for automated lifts, um, and high-volume quote-unquote warehousing. So if they have fifty-six loading bays and half a million square feet of warehousing, there's obviously gonna be a ton of trucks coming out. And it'll wreck, I think, the residential property values up and down the corridor once the town becomes notorious as a trucking hub. Also, the loading bays aren't shown on any set of plans, they're not shown on this one, they're not shown on the original set, they show the proposed loading bays, but none of the existing, so I have to physically go to the site to count the existing loading bays and add it to the proposed, and as a neighbor, like, if I was proposing to build a house, you'd wanna see all four elevations and what we're gonna live next to. It wouldn't fit on the plans because the scale is so huge, um, Jake said, the Empire State Building lying on side is twelve hundred fifty million feet. These two mine properties are more than the Empire State Building lying on side, it's massive. That's the properties, the two walls can run out eight hundred million feet, forty feet high, like, if you fall onto the mountain, you can't see the mountain out, it's huge. Like, uh, it matters to me a lot more what that looks like than what it looks like looking down on it. But I wanna thank you all for volunteering and your time, um, and I totally agree, like, we need a combined traffic report that the town commissions, that looks at the intersection, not just with use code one fifty-six, but with both warehouses. Because they're saying there's no tenant, and, or the tenant's like a box, storage company, but then when it's built, and there's a half a million square feet there, and fifty-six loading bays, and all these automatic lifts, and they come back and say they don't have a tenant, and Amazon wants to rent it because this is perfect for them, and they're telling you they're not gonna pay their taxes because they don't have a tenant unless you let them use this space, so like, what guardrails do we have, once we build it? And they wanna change the use, like, the building's already there.
Hi, ready?
I'm ready.
Uh, I'm Carol Baxter, uh, thirty-four Lawrence Lane, Palisades, New York. I agree.
I'm still riding.
Okay.
Carol Baxter, thirty-four.
Yes, yes, um, I agree with all of the speakers, and I wanna thank you all for your thoughtful consideration of the traffic, you've all mentioned the traffic, especially Mr. Andrews and Mr. McCory and Miss. Hyder, you brought up the project happening across the street, which I think is really, really important, to look at this project, that whole corridor as a whole, and it's frustrating for us because we don't know if we can really say, I mean, you're dealing with this project in front of you right now, but there are others, and I thank you for taking it in consideration, because this is a very, very fragile intersection. Um, I'm not gonna repeat everybody, you've heard all about the traffic, you know about the traffic, and the watershed and all that stuff, but, um, and also about what's the value to the community. Right now, uh, they say that they don't need as many parking spots because these, these buildings won't need as many staff members. So these huge buildings, right now there's twenty staff members at the one building, who are these twenty people? It's not encouraging more employment for people that live here, so it's what you talked about too, you know? But I think that's really all I have to say, but thank you, keep, um, be utilitized, thank you very much.
I think you can hear me without that. The tenant's address, please, Larry? Yes, I'm on my way. Larry Vale, three eighty-nine Kings Highway, Tepan. The first part of my short remarks will be about, um, the Spark Hill Creek Watershed Alliance, of which I'm the chairman. I sent a letter, I didn't notice it on your list, Mike, uh, but I resent it to you, Caitlin, so, um, from, I think this was from, um, two thousand twenty-one. And this has been going on so long, it's kinda hard to remember, but I, I'm not gonna go over all the points in that letter, I'd like you to see it again. But one thing that I think everybody agrees on, this is the worst flooding place in Orange Town. This is the place that everybody knows about, every time there's even a, a minor thunderstorm in, directly over this, there is a flood there. So flooding and traffic have been the big issues, and it's these kinds of development that makes flooding happen. I'm not saying the applicant doesn't have a right to build something on his property that's perfectly well-known, but anything that extends that right beyond, um, what is acceptable to the town and the citizens should really strongly be looked at, and, uh, what, one thing in addition, um, is that I wonder if the applicant has considered the erosive velocity and effect on the creek, this is within the stormwater design guidelines, often this gets overlooked, and I, because it's in such a critical area, I think that should be looked at a lot. I don't have time to go over all of that tonight, so I'd like to reiterate, um, I don't live right there, but I know some of the neighbors, and I've seen them in meetings now for four years on this project. A lot of the things have not been addressed, like the screening next to the housing that's right there, uh, a lot of things should still be looked at very carefully, and especially the truck traffic, which as we all, and the applicant is right, a comprehensive plan is not an ordinance, but I think you have the power to set a tone for a Z B A, uh, in consideration of this, and I appreciate your support in being very careful about this, thank you. Yes, I, I said it to Caitlin, and I, you know, if you didn't get it, give me a call. Uh, just now, so. Was it your fault? What's your name, sir? It works. Mary Finnegan, just speak loud.
Hello. Uh, it's John Abitangelo.
Could you just spell your last name?
Sure, uh, A E B B is in Boyd, A T A N G E L O.
Thank you, and what's your address?
I'm at seven three forty, seven Route forty.
Oh, seven Route three forty, okay.
Yeah, basically, I'm also on the Spark Hill Creek Watershed Alliance, um, I'm basically just gonna reiterate everything that Larry just said, and just to note that, besides the obvious traffic issues and, you know, the need for benefits to the community, um, you know, there are pollution concerns, um, you know, I also work as an engineer, and I've worked on projects before where we've been asked to retain the full water quality volume, so no treatment, no passage into the creek that needs to be retained, retained fully in dry wells. So I also have deep concerns about oil and pollutants, it's another thing, we don't actually know what kind of chemicals released, I haven't, um, looked, if there's gonna be a chemical manifest on site or an S A A, uh, you know, hazardous waste area where they're going to retain such chemicals, um, but if any of that is brought to the site, it needs full chemical retention, and that needs to be accounted for, um, so yeah, that was my recommendation, don't actually pre-treat any of the water, retain it fully on site, um, especially if there's chemicals. The other concern's obviously infringement on wetlands and floodplain issues, um, like Larry just explained, that this is one of the most heavily flooded areas in Orange Town, in all of Rockland County. Um, and I think that there needs to be some consideration of the S L R flood study that was conducted recently, on the impacts on three oh three and three forty, and not to mention that there is a sewage, multiple sewage treatment plants downstream of Spark Hill Creek in that area, so it wouldn't just be flooding, you would also like to get an overflow of sewage if this did have a significant impact on Spark Hill Creek. Oh, and there is also concerns regarding the recent approval of the South Corners plot. Uh, if I'm correct, that also got approved for construction, so, you know, it's not just this place, you know, one, you know, one twenty-five, et cetera, that's being, uh, proposed for construction. Um, there's additional parcels that are going to be constructed, um, I think that's the end of my three minutes.
Sorry, just the information, Paul Corners is gonna have green roof, number one. Which is gonna take in a lot of woodwork, so hopefully that will mitigate what's going on in there now. Should be the first one of its kind in Orange Town. Yes.
And then do you see your?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. What's your name, sir?
My name's Matthew Fishman.
Wait, wait, wait. Matthew Fishman, F I S?
F I S H, M A N.
Right, and what's your address?
Two forty-two South Green Bush Road.
Okay, go ahead, Matt.
Is there no particular order, I'm just gonna rattle them off. Trucks do go through that intersection every day, um, through Cosmo Mountain Road and South Green Bush Road, I see them go both ways every day. I can tell they're from there because I know the names on the trucks, I see them out my window every day from my desk, I've never seen a ticket generated to a truck ever, even though I see them go every day. Uh, employees turn sideways coming off that turn, and when we will come into, uh, South Green Bush Road on three oh three, it's hard to see those cars going sideways, because they, they wanna make that light, they wanna get home, so they, they sit at that stop sign, and they watch a car after car go in front of them, and then eventually they just go sideways and just risk it, and half the time they're hanging out. Um, I'm sure you guys have seen that, if not, you see it every night. The road's too narrow, South Green Bush Road for trucks, there's no sidewalk, you can see that evident, anytime three oh three is closed, it'll show every complication with that, and the intersections in both sides, um, we just saw it recently. What about the noise off the mountain, I've never seen anybody comment about the noise coming off the mountain, anyone that knows, that lives on South Green Bush Road, it's hard to tell even which way the train is coming from, even though which we, we know it's coming from the other way, but we hear it from both ways, because it, it's a rock mountain. Every sound comes off of that, we hear every truck, that quack, quack, every night, that hooks up and dumps and drops, we hear every single one of those noises. I have videos of trucks with no li, I have videos, pictures, I, I don't know how to submit these, of trucks with no lights, no brake lights, no reverse lights, they don't stop at the stop signs, they just keep going, um, right onto South Green Bush. They do all their oil changes, I'm assuming, on premises, so while you didn't list it, there's basically a whole service station for all these trucks, right there in the parking lot, because that's where they do the work and get the oil changes. There's garbage around the perimeter of the, the property, a lot of garbage, I'm talking like oil cans, um, red gas cans, you name it. It's, it's around the, the perimeter of that. Uh, we have wells, a lot of us on South Green Bush have old houses, and we have wells, so it does matter what's going in that water. Uh, these tenants are not guaranteed for him or his company, um, so what happens when that tenant moves out, and now they need more than twenty spaces, because they, they have more employees? Right, it, it's, it's not guaranteed, so if they move out, we got that empty thing sitting there. And then they're gonna wanna turn into something else.
Thank you, your time is up, sir. I just wanna mention to the board, my head ran out, so I'm gonna make notes on my phone, I don't want you to think I'm being rude.
Vanessa Lappin, six fifty-nine Western Highway, Bloval. I agree with all the comments that have been presented tonight, and I wanna thank the board for the thought on this, that they're giving this project. I wanna also add, we have two thousand signatures against this, I don't think that many people have voted for the school board in, in the school budget. So two thousand people have said no to this project, and you guys can say no too. The comprehensive plan isn't an ordinance, but it's a blueprint, it's a blueprint for hope, and now it's your turn to turn it into a plan that brings that hope to life. I want us to imagine driving down three oh three and saying, this is a beautiful town, the center of Orangeburg, the center of Bloval, it's beautiful here, so how do we do that? We have to work with the developers, we have to find other things for them to bring to the site, you can't say no, you can't build, right? So maybe there's hydroponics like Stokes Farm, the, the group at, in Palisades put out a request and proposal, they got lots of different input that brought that film studio idea to the fore. So there's ways to work with the community and bring responsible development, maybe set aside some of the land, like one fifty-five, and leave green. But there's ways to work with the community, there's ways to work with developers to bring the right kind of development, because we all wanna drive through the town, and we wanna say this is a beautiful place to live, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak? Would any? Can you step up? Hi, what's your name, sir?
Adam Blankford.
Wait, 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 spell your last name for me.
B-L-A-N-K-F-O-R-T.
Wait, B-L-A-N-K-F-O-R-T. And your address?
Two thirty-nine South Green Bush Road.
Okay.
I just wanna say I pretty much agree with everybody's comments, uh, I, I live four houses down, I've lived there my whole life, I think this would be a very horrific project to come to Green Bush Road because not only has the traffic always been an issue, but anytime Green Bush Road gets additional traffic, there's also been, you know, numerous near fatal accidents on Green Bush Road, especially on the very blind curve right around my house, there were so many accidents there over time. Um, you know, even school buses had to pick up kids at certain houses because of that turn, so I think that that is just a very dangerous situation that's only gonna get magnified so much with a project like this. And I really also agree with the fact of like, you know, I don't care what you say about generators or what kind of HVAC systems are gonna be there, but the ways in half a million square feet behind like a mountain, that's like an echo chamber and it's gonna be a real big noise disturbance as well. Not to also mention, I think it's also gonna devalue all the properties nearby as well, so that's all I wanted to say.
Anybody else like to speak? Anybody else like to speak?
Maria Passero Ti, P-A-S-
Oh, wait, 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 I'm still writing Maria, okay.
P-A-S-S-A-R-O-T-T-I, thirty-four Eimer Street, I think I have.
How do you spell Eimer?
E-I-M-E-R. So, I don't live in, first of all, thank you all for your time, I know it's late, I will be brief. Um, and I appreciate especially all of the questions and details that you're, you know, bringing to light. Um, in regard to the comprehensive plan, I just wanna reiterate what others have said, that this is the view of the people, the voice of the people has been heard through that process, a lot was invested in that process and it should be listened to. And when we think about the impact that this has, we need to think about it on the community. We're talking a lot about one specific intersection, but those trucks don't disintegrate when they leave that intersection. They go south, they go north, and when they go south, there isn't a place for them to go and they end up in places like Spark Hill, on Kings Highway, where I live, that cannot accommodate those trucks. And part of it is because they have no other way to get to their destination. So, I just ask that you think about the impact that, that this has, traffic, environment, everything, not just to the specific area, but to our entire town and community. Because making these decisions, two warehouses, another one across the way, they, you have to see the entire picture and think of the full impact it has on our community. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to make a comment? Anybody else like to make a comment? No, nobody, uh, she went motion, cause public portion, it's one of the, who's the second's Barry, all in favor? All right. Any more comments from the board? You're in nine, okay. All right. Anybody like to make, uh, so, someone have a motion for lead agency? Motion for lead agency. Ms. Andrews? Have a second? Are we doing it for one or the other or both? You should do, yeah. One twenty-five? Oh, sorry, okay.
Start with one twenty-five.
All right. Uh, one twenty-five Green Bush, South Green Bush Road. Excuse me, can you please keep it down, we're still coming on with this discussion. Do I have a, uh, motion on one twenty-five South Green Bush Road for lead agency? Motion for lead agency. Is Ms. Andrews in line of hand, second? All in favor? All right. Regarding one twenty-five, uh, since there is a potential for significant adverse impacts, impacts, the planning board has decided to make AKRF to review the entire project. We are requested to receive a proposal from R-K, AKRF for this project. There are motion on the, uh, seconds for here, we'll have the, uh, hiring of the planner, AKRF. Yes, that's correct. Yes, I make that motion. Motion? Have a second? Miss Linehan, all in favor? All right.
Independent traffic study as well?
Yes, independent traffic study as well.
We have not obtained a proposal from the consultant for that.
Right.
With the other warehouse projects, it's been a separate consultant from AKRF, remember? So, we'll have to request that.
Okay, related that into the motion. That motion includes indep, in, including an independent traffic study for one twenty-five. Okay? Uh, do I have a, uh, motion for lead agency on one fifty-five South Green Bush Road? Motion for lead agency. Ms. Andrews, second. Ms. Linehan, all in favor? All right. In this case too, since there is a potential for significant adverse impacts, the planning board has decided to make AKRF to review the entire project. We are requested to receive a proposal from our A-R, AKRF, and in this proposal, we are including an independent traffic study. So, we'll, uh, move Ms. Andrews, do I have a second? Miss Linehan, all in favor? All right. Okay, so, you have our comments?
Thank you.
All right, uh-
Mr. Chairman, the applicant, uh, needs to request a continuation?
Yes, you do. Yes. Okay, you're, you have to say, request the rest of the word. Yeah, we, we request a continuation and we'll respond to comments. And that would, your next meeting is April twelve, you said?
We will not be on the next meeting.
Right, now that's what I'm trying to confirm, so-
Uh, well, we're, number one, these studies have to be done, so we have to find out from the consultants when they will be completed before the project can be reassigned. So, we will reach out to the consultants, get that information, as well as, um, I think this is, is this the one?
Yeah, I have one to give him.
Okay, so there is a copy from AKRF. We'll obtain, um, also the proposal from an independent traffic consultant and we'll send that as well and then there'll have to be money put into, at the escrow account to accommodate that.
And was the, the motion for AKRF to also do an independent traffic study?
So, AKRF will do the, the, uh, plan, act as a planner and review the entire project. An independent traffic study will be done by a different consultant, which is how the board has handled it previously.
Okay.
So, yeah, and then AKRF will review your traffic study, the independent traffic study and the whole, whole package.
Hey, I have a, I do have a question. I've been providing checks for, um, for escrow for AKRF in the past couple of months and years. What, what has, what's the difference between that, that I, we have been providing and now?
They were just reviewing at that point previously, only reviewing the older traffic study.
Okay.
This capacity is as a planner, which they review everything. So, they'll review SECR, they will review drainage comments, they're looking at, at more of a holistic approach from a planner perspective. That's the reason too, you also do the independent traffic, so they buy a different-
Buy it.
Correct.
Well, that take into account also the, the, the intersection in from other essential-
They always do.
Yeah, they'll include all of the projects that are in high point at this point.
Yes, we have, uh, in previous requests for this, we have provided all the traffic studies that have been provided for other projects along the corridor, so they get a deep, mopping stack of traffic studies.
All right. Thank you. Very much. Please, this time, answer by me, the same comments will come over and over again. I would hope to, uh, we will be able to, uh, hear this. Will Shepard, I do appreciate it, thank you very much. I have a more to me.
So, I sent that to Cheryl. Two years ago.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you just have minutes and closing?
Minutes and-
We'll, anyway, except for minutes.
Motion to accept the minutes for-
Mr. Farry just said?
What was it, Dave?
Marching.
Marching.
Do you make the changes?
Oh, yes, including the changes.
As noted.
Okay, are they, uh, noted in there? I sent you a copy to them.
Yeah, but Cheryl does that.
Okay, but it's, has to include the, I think it was-
I just put as noted, a, a, as-
As noted in Mr. Mandel's email.
As noted in Mr. Mandel's email. Okay, so Mr. Farry made the motion.
Two seconds. Two seconds. Second, uh, Ms. Andrews, second, all in favor? All right. Motion.
Um, it said not, um, as-
But you weren't, you weren't there at the last camp.
Right, I'm just, not left.
Stayed, yeah. Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn. Ms., Ms. Linehan, uh, Ms. Andrews, second, all in favor? All right. Hold on.